This meeting will now come to order. Juanita, ready to call the roll here?
Randy Brockway.
Here.
Lisa Gaynor.
Here.
David Kadama.
Here.
Rachel Morella.
Here.
Michael O'Brien.
Here.
Arthur Perry.
Present.
Mary Rose Mangia.
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, first of all, we do have a lot of people signed up for public comments today, so I want to first of all thank everybody for coming and offering their comments, and also going to ask anybody who wants to, who will be commenting, to use one of the two microphones on either side. It helps you be recorded better for TV purposes, so video purposes. And again, a reminder to board members, I know we don't need these reminders anymore, but not to cover our own microphones. Okay, so there we go with announcements, and I would like to call on Steve Elginus, is that?
Thank you.
All right.
My name is Steve Elginus, and I'm a teacher of fifth grade at Central School, and I'm also a member of the central leadership team. I want to thank you for all your time and dedication and support you have provided the staff and students of District 96. I have been fortunate enough to be part of the district's ELA Common Core alignment team. Over the past year, our team has spent a great amount of time and effort developing a curriculum that will meet the rigorous demands of the Common Core. It was amazing to create lessons and share great ideas with my fellow colleagues from different schools. This included grade level members and reading support members. Together, we were able to determine the resources and lessons that will best engage and challenge our students with the desired outcome of successful Common Core implementation. During the process, we all shared a committed and passionate approach to achieve greater student success. Often, we had different classroom experiences and lessons that we were eager to share with each other. These experiences resulted in a combined effort that will increase lesson effectiveness. While implementing a new curriculum or lesson brings a certain amount of anxiety, the exchange of resources, thoughts, ideas, and concerns with each other have better prepared me for the rigors set forth in the curriculum. Looking forward to next year, I would love to share our thought process with the remainder of the grade level teams, so they are better prepared to deliver lessons that are new to them. I will also welcome any new insights they will bring to the table, as the Common Core curriculum is a work in progress that can be expanded, evaluated, and modified in an ongoing manner. The potential greatness of this curriculum initiative will be maximized through consistent and continuous professional development, with all the members of our grade level team present. While taking action in regards to the proposed professional development plans, please consider the direct benefit the students will receive when the staff are provided the opportunity to collaborate frequently and effectively on an initiative as important as the Common Core. The additional professional development hours offered this evening will greatly increase the opportunity for all staff members to positively enhance the knowledge, skills, and experience of all students of the District 96 will obtain. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Next, Paula Stevens.
Thanks a lot, Steve. I don't have any else. You can hear my heart pounding, and thanks for this, too. I'm Paula Stevens. I teach third grade at Ames, and I, too, am on the Common Core Alignment Team for English Language Arts. I volunteered to be on this committee because I figured it was a sure way for me to understand what was coming our way and what we needed to do, more sure than just getting it from someone else. It has been a lot of fun, I have to admit. I've really learned a lot, and my reason for coming here tonight is to help. I know that we're talking about professional development for the next year, and I just hope that you will really consider giving us as much as we can get. For an example, there are three of us, three teachers, Patty Perdantich, Danny Merzek, and myself, who are responsible for doing the English Language Arts curriculum for third grade. There are nine teachers that teach third grade in Riverside, and, you know, it's kind of a daunting responsibility for us. And one of the things that I'm looking forward to greatly is being able to work with all my colleagues at a grade level, so that we can, for once and for all, all be on the same page, delivering the similar, not similar, but the same curriculum, with the same resources and the same mindset. And of course, there's room for teachers to have, you know, their interpretations and add their gift and their flair, but I've been in the district for a long time, and I don't think we've ever had that consistency the way we've kind of wanted it. And I think that this is going to offer so much to the kids, and it's going to make us better teachers in the process, and I think the more time we can spend working together to collaborate and improve on what we've already done will be really, really valuable to our kids, so.
Thank you very much, Paula. Julie Lawby. Am I saying it right, finally?
Julie Lawby, Blythe Park, address 505 York Road. I'm here for a couple of things tonight. First, as a parent, I, for those that weren't here at the March meeting or missed the invitation from Mrs. Bryan, I encourage you to go to the library and see the young author books. Unfortunately, the family death, I won't be there for ours this Thursday, but Peter and I have been there the last few Thursdays, checking out books in the afternoon, because he's in morning kindergarten, and it is amazing what you see Ann and her staff going through on Thursdays. And when we've been there on Saturdays, you see community members who do not have kids in District 96. I know who they are, their kids are in high school and college, and they have actually stopped and look at these creations that our kids have done. They have taken the time to care about what District 96 has collaborated with the library and see these books that these kids have written. I mean, it's amazing. They, I mean, they are, it's not just skimming through, I mean, you see some of these community members coming and sitting down with a book, and they're not in a little corner, they're on display. They're beautiful. So I encourage you, the last one is this Thursday. My other reason for coming, I'm speaking as a parent, but also as an educator, you see me, I know at a lot of the board meetings, but being an educator for 15 years before I stayed home, which is almost 10 years, I know I've been home a long time, but I do teach a weekly basis, too, with Sunday School Superintendent, I really think you need to look at these options that have been given, and as we were saying at the previous meetings, now with what you've narrowed down to option one and two, option two, really with having that consistency on a daily, or should we say weekly basis, it's not just consistency for the teachers, but I want you to look at it for the parents, too. For a lot of the parents that have come up to me from Blythe at work, or they want consistency for their kids, you're going to really give an advantage to both, and 60 hours of professional development, this isn't something we're looking to do for the next 10 years. This is something we need to do to get caught up, so our staff can be as good as they are and excel. And I think for, we'll hear more of what people say tonight, but I think option two is there, you don't have to say, oh, is it on the calendar, which Monday is it? You have that consistency, and you give the teachers everything they need right now, you give them that boost, so they're able to perform, they're able to do all these things we've been talking about for these weeks and these months, and they're able to achieve what they need to do with Common Core, and yet all the other things that are on a teacher's agenda, which all the teachers here, you know, we all know that you go home and you have work for hours afterwards at times. So look at option two, but obviously what the majority wants, but I would lean towards option two and give them that boost they need, so we can get as much done and be on that same page as we need to with the rest of the schools in the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next, Mary Judy.
Hi, I'm Mary Judy. Questions that I wanted to ask of the board. In mid-December, I was among parents who applied to serve on committees, forming to address areas of special interest within the district, and in mid-January, I was notified by Dr. Gannon that I was selected to serve on Special Services Committee, who will be contacted shortly by the interim directors of Special Ed with further information. Then in mid-February, Mrs. King, the interim director of Special Education, invited our committee members to convene to discuss an upcoming all-parent meeting discussing IEPs that would be held the following week. I haven't heard any communications about the committee since that time, and can you just let me know, are the committees, or are any of the committees that were formed in January, are they active? And do they have any kind of structure, plans, or goals, or what's going on with all the committees that were put together?
These are the parent committees?
Yes. Well, there were committees made up of?
Parents and teachers.
Well, parents and administrators.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And by the way, I just want to mention, this is the second person who has brought this to my attention within the last two or three days, that they're just kind of wondering, I think the one that they mentioned was the Special Services.
That's the same one that I'm?
So I just want to mention that, oddly enough, I heard about this two or three days ago. So when you get an opportunity, if you could, you know, update not only Mary, but myself as well, okay?
The second part of my question is about the candidates for hire that are being discussed tonight in special session. I'm very interested in learning more about the candidates suggested for the administrative positions, and I understood from the district newsletter that Dr. Sharma Lewis puts out that the Hauser PTO president was involved in interviewing the Hauser principal candidates, and I'm curious whether stakeholder input, specifically from parents, was also requested with interviewing the Special Education Director candidates, and if so, how were those parents selected, and if not, why was that one handled differently than the Hauser principal position was handled?
All right. All right, next, if David Barsati could step up to a microphone, I hope I'm reading it properly.
That's right, correct.
Thank you, David.
Sure. My name is David Barsati, and I understand, I know that there's like a Comcast contract out there right now, it's been submitted by E-Rate, and so I'm not familiar with that process, and I know it's a government process, so it's a little different than I'm sure the private sector and how private sectors do it. But to give you a background, I know I've spoken with some of you before in the past, but to give you an overview, I have 20 years of technology experience spanning software development, networks, database management. The last 15 years, I've been dealing with complex system integrations. I routinely deal with technology vendors who oftentimes overpromise and underdeliver. And I am responsible for working with these vendors and integrating a lot of disparate systems. I'm currently, to give you an idea, I'm currently working on a project that's dealing with seven technology vendors, three groups of consultants, and internal staff, trying to integrate a complex hospital system. It's from this vantage point that I'm telling you that this Comcast proposal tonight leaves too many unanswered questions and raises significant issues that need to be addressed. I have reviewed the Comcast Enterprise Business Services proposal, and in short, it is my professional opinion that you should not approve this proposal tonight. There are many reasons for this, and I'm not going to get into a whole litany of it, but I just want to sort of state some of the highlights. If anyone's looked at it closely, you notice on page seven of the report, it states that Comcast is offering you a discounted rate of, off of the $5,200 standard rate, which comes to $3,120. That's on page three. However, on page seven, it states that the charge is actually 20% more at $6,200. So what is the real rate, I guess, is my question. That needs to be answered before you sign a contract. One thing, I deal with a lot of contracts, every contract I've, every RFP that I've ever solicited or gotten back, even if we ask or not, we always get references. This doesn't contain any references. I'm sure District 96 is not the only school district to use Comcast, you should be asking for references. I also noticed that they invited you to go visit their network services area. I don't know if anyone's done that, if they haven't, they should. I have also dealt with a number of privately-held companies in the past, and if they want our business, they have to provide financials to us to tell us that they're going to be around next year. Now, Comcast is a billion-dollar corporation, but for them to hide behind the veil of a subsidiary, saying this is Comcast, is a subsidiary of Comcast Corporation, and they don't have to display these, just tell us your financials, sort of indicates to me that Comcast is trying to, like, basically hide something. I mean, what are they trying to hide? Why can't they provide you the financials? I've also took the opportunity to look at the Comcast Corporation's annual report for 2013, and on page 37 of that report, it states that they provide, Comcast does provide customer information that is, quote, "confidential, proprietary, and personal information to third parties." Yet, this is not addressed in their presentation. I mean, what are they sharing with these third parties? Who are these third parties? I mean, do we want Comcast selling our personal information, or our students' personal information, our children's personal information? Anytime somebody logs onto these networks, all that information is tracked. Somebody logs onto Facebook, they know what they're looking at, they know who they're talking to, they know who their friends are. Okay? So I guess the thing is, I think it's a little premature, I understand the reasons for wanting to sign this now, I understand that this is the foundation for what you're looking to do in the future with Common Core and everything. But I guess the most importantly, though, is some of you have publicly stated that you do not know much about technology, and my thought is, you should not be publicly, you should not commit the district to a five-year, five-year technology plan without the expertise of somebody who will thoroughly vet vendors and their truthfulness. Is, you are in the process of hiring a technology vendor, excuse me, a technology director. Let that person make the recommendation on who to go with, not some E-Rate or some government agency or something, let them make the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, David, and then hopefully we can address some of the things you brought up during that portion of our business meeting. Thank you. Next, Sarah Clark. Hi, Sarah.
Hi, I'm Sarah Clark, reading specialist at Hauser Junior High, and I've been following the board's discussions on professional development, and I want to thank you for making it a priority. I'm also here on behalf of the Hauser leadership team to reiterate how important professional development is for us. A goal in the district is to, is for our students to have accelerated growth from year to year, and to achieve that beyond curriculum, beyond materials, beyond programs. Researchers find that one of the strongest links between student achievement is teacher quality. So the best investment for our students is to provide them with the highest-quality teachers that are continually, you know, improving their craft, learning new technologies, and implementing new strategies in the classroom. So to be able to do that, we just need time. We need time to research best practices, we need time to meet with our colleagues, we need time to go into our classrooms and try the new strategies, and then come back and look at the students' work and the data, and see if it's working, and if not, go right back and try something else. The way the current model is, by the time we look at data, it's been a long time since the assessments, or it's been a long time since I gave that lesson, because we only get together a couple of times a year. It's not immediate, it's not continuous. Professional development would allow us to be more accountable to implement these strategies and try them out with our students, and come back into a learning community and get ideas for how we could better implement them in the future. So as you make decisions tonight, just keep that in mind, that investing in our professional development is also making a strong investment in the achievement of our students, because the correlation is very strong.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Judy Sayer to step to the microphone now.
Hi, I'm Judy Sayer. I teach first grade at Blythe Park School. I'm a member of the Blythe Park Leadership Team, and heavily invested in the Common Core ELA team. Thank you, Brian. The staff at Blythe Park School wholeheartedly supports the early-release option number six to enable adequate professional development for our next school year, and some of the reasons this option allows staff members, number one, to meet and confer with their grade-level teams, especially invaluable in a single-section school, two, to immerse ourselves in the evolving Common Core curriculum, math, language arts, and also our new Phos Science curriculum, and three, to be inserviced on the new and current assessments that will be given to students next school year. We believe the time lost from instruction next year would be more than made up in the enhanced quality of instruction given to our students due to the professional development that we will receive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Danielle.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Merazek. I'm the third-grade teacher at Hollywood School. I would like to thank the board for all that you do each and every day to support the District 96 community. It is exciting to learn that a professional development model is in consideration for next year. As a teacher in a single-section school, there are opportunities to collaborate vertically with teachers at other grade levels within Hollywood School. However, we are eager to have more frequent opportunities to collaborate with the same grade-level colleagues from different schools within the district. Continuous professional development will allow all staff members to have ongoing collaboration regarding district initiatives and the implementation of best practices. As part of the Hollywood Leadership Team, we feel it is important for staff members to collaborate with colleagues throughout the district on a continuous basis in order to ensure we are providing the same high-quality educational programming at all District 96 schools. Knowing that education is constantly changing, it is crucial to plan for and prepare our students for success with new initiatives and the new state assessments, which are scheduled to start next school year. Later this evening, you will hear two potential models for professional development. The option-two weekly professional development model maximizes staff development time, creates consistency in scheduling for teachers as well as students, and allows us to work most effectively toward all of our goals. Thank you for your consideration as we continue to look for opportunities to optimize learning and teaching, but most importantly, learning for all students within our District 96. Thank you.
And next, it's, is it Gretchen? Hi, Gretchen. How do you say your last name?
Lupfer.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. I'm Gretchen Lupfer. I'm a parent in the community. My son actually attends Blythe School. I am also a certified teacher, and I've been teaching in the Chicago Public Schools, and over the past couple of years have been involved in a math intervention program there. I'm here to support the option-two, which is professional development on a weekly basis. I think the teachers have said it perfectly, that they need this in order to meet the needs that are set forth by Common Core. I think we need to listen to their voice, because they know what's best for themselves and therefore for our students, and I am, I for one, want to have the most prepared teachers in the classroom with our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then finally, I'm going to call on Madalenaus.
Hi, thank you. Madalenaus, if you don't know me, I've been working in tech systems department here at District 96 for about the past five years. I'd like to address the board members, staff, administration, teachers, and the community, and thank you so much for all the support you've provided me over the last five years. I have attended my resignation, as I am accepting a new position out of state, but I wanted to thank everybody. I've developed some amazing growth professionally and personally in working with staff members and board members and speaking with them at different times, and it has been wonderful, and I really do appreciate the time I've had here at District 96. And I'm really going to miss the wonderful relationships with the staff and the students. As many of you know, I have worked with the students in the musicals, the plays, I've helped out, not as a direct coach, but helping in some of the sporting events, and it has been phenomenal to be here, and I just wanted to publicly thank everybody before I leave.
Again, thank you, everybody, for commenting and coming. I'm sorry, yes.
I didn't sign in because I thought there were so many people that were commenting, but there was a point I wanted to make that hadn't been made about the professional development connected to you.
Can you? Stop the mic.
Thank you. Sorry.
My name's Liz Bushio. I have three students at Ames School, and I live on Northwood Road. So the two options that are on the table, based on the email that was sent today, or yesterday, or whenever it was sent, are either for early release every other week, or early release every week, and I'm here to put my support as a working parent behind releasing every week instead of every other week. I think the consistency for the kids, as well as the sanity of the parents in terms of handling childcare after school, is very important, but I also feel with option-one, they would still have substitutes every once in a while, and I really feel the substitutes for an hour or two a day are very disruptive. I know my kids don't like it unless they get the favorite sub, and it, I think the kids are going to do better without that disruption, and getting out an hour earlier every week than, and having their own teacher 100% of the time, well, if they're not sick, so. That's the only point I wanted to make, so.
Thank you very much, Liz. Okay. All right. Next, I would like to ask Dr. Sharma Lewis, if she could go through the FOIA requests and responses.
Sure. In your packet, you'll have, you see four FOIA requests and four responses. The first one is for a Mr. Jared, who is asking for emails with the word Diller in them, so you can see the responses that we've put together. There is another request from a Ms. Julie Lewis for the settlement agreement regarding Susan Battersby. There is a crest from Bob Skolnick regarding any communications from District 96 staff, administrators, or board members to Dr. Lamerson, and there is a FOIA request from Jerry Buttermore regarding our check register, and you can see all the responses are all included incomplete in your packet.
All right.
I have a question about the last item. What's the difference between the, there was a, the request from Buttermore, Mr. Buttermore was for the copy of the check register. Could you confirm for me what the difference between the check register and the invoices that we see every month?
Can you do that for us, Zach?
Yes, the check register has check numbers. The payable list that you get every month, it doesn't have the check numbers about to be paid. So the check numbers are not hot down, but it's the same information, except it doesn't have?
Okay, okay. So I noted that it's 176 pages requested.
Correct.
How long did that take? Does that take a while to compile, or?
It took about 45 minutes.
45 minutes. Okay. Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you. We don't have any amount announcements or presentations from the floor, but I would like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings, and I'll list them. There would be the Finance Committee meeting on March 4th, the minutes of the closed session March 4th, the minutes of the special meeting March 11th, the minutes of the closed session March 11th, the Policy Committee minutes March 19th, the regular business meeting minutes of March 19th, and also the minutes of the closed session of March 19th. May I have a motion to approve those, please?
So moved.
Second. And any discussion? All right, it's been moved and seconded, that we approve the minutes of the meetings that I just read, and if Juanita could call, I guess we can do this by a voice vote? Oh, well, I'm sorry. Why don't you just call the roll? We'll just be consistent here.
Rachel Morella.
Hi.
Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Lisa Gaynor.
Hi.
Randy Brockway.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mangia.
Aye.
The minutes are approved, thank you. Next, I'm going to ask Dr. Sharma Lewis to go through her guiding principles, if she would.
Thank you. As you know, we have our three guiding principles that we review each month. First one, academic and professional excellence. We conducted and completed the interview process for the four available administrative positions in our district. A team comprised of staff, parents, administrators, and board members served on several of the committees. We are recommending the finalists to the board for action at tonight's meeting after closed session. Summer school planning has begun, and will be communicated to parents in the community in the next few weeks. Classes will focus on enrichment and skills-based instruction, and will be taught by our own district staff. Curriculum, we've been investigating our curriculum needs for math, and as we continue to enter our own district resources in the same solution related to the Common Core. And also related to the Common Core, administrators explored Alphonic's early literacy instructional material today to help meet the needs of the foundational skills that the Common Core state standards is requiring. Later on tonight, right before the action items, I'll be discussing the professional development, two options, and how we created a twice-a-month option and also a monthly option, so you'll be able to see those. And then we also have a few staff members and Dr. Gannon, who will be sharing their input as well. For financial and operational excellence, the district technology staff, as well as our interim staff with NET 56, completed several our interim staff with NET 56, completed several projects this month. A complete physical inventory of all of our resources that are in the districts is about 99.7% accurate, so we're very proud of that. And we also work to clean up our security FOB, which is how we get in and out of our building for central management. The E-rate process will be taking action on tonight or our recommendation, so Mr. Zayed will review that right before we take action on that. We've also begun the fiscal 2015 budget process. We're gathering information from this year's budget and also working with the district leadership team to look at addressing the needs for next year, as well as also capital and non-capital-related equipment. The traffic study for Hauser's drop-off lane, for the handicap lane, has been completed with the Village. They did an onsite analysis the week of March 17th, in addition to other observations along with the district staff, and the report is expected to be completed and available to us in May 2015. Is it May 2015 or 2014?
Twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen. Okay, that's what I thought, sorry. I was like, wow.
Long wait.
Yeah. And our relocation of our nurse's office from Hauser Central to make it more handicap-accessible, we are looking at some related costs as far as moving the nurse's office. We've received a couple of estimates, and the first one that we've gotten is $39,000, so we're going to continue to look at other ways that we can meet the needs of moving that nurse's office.
Where's a location?
You want to address that, Dan?
Yeah, so what we have in the student council's office, there's a couple of spaces that we want to convert to, at Hauser, that we want to convert to the nurse's office and do a swap, and have the student council, guidance council, I'm sorry.
I'm like, wait.
Guidance council.
Student council? They don't know.
So it'd be a first-floor location.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
So Zach, what is the cost implications? What's the, what's, what is costing us the $39,000?
Well, $20,000 is some structural change. Cabinet, blocking out a wall, opening up the doorway. The other portion, $19,000 of it is bringing piping to have the bathroom put in for the nurse's office, a handicap accessible bathroom.
Zach, who provided the estimates and who are you working through to get those?
We, Jim Anderson Construction, FBG. We're waiting for answers from them.
All right, and FBG is?
They're the ones that did the bump out for Hauser.
Okay.
It's F-E-G?
F-E.
L-B.
Yeah, I remember good people as I recall. All right. I have some questions of, on the curriculum item, Dr., or Bob, if you don't mind, I would like you to explain a little bit more, again, for me and for our audience, is what exactly do we mean by investigating our curriculum needs for math as we continue to enter district-owned served resources into sync solutions? If you could help me understand that as well as ours.
Can I refer to Dr. Gannon, since he's been working with our staff on that?
Sure. So our, one of our main goals is going to spend money on materials that are absolutely necessary. So what the committees are doing is we're gathering all of our district resources and entering, we're using, it's a standards, it's a standard-based curriculum, so we're using materials that align with some of the Common Core standards that already exist in the district as much as possible. So the order of when they're taught might look a little bit different, even the grade level might look a little bit different based on the Common Core, but if those materials align to a standard in the Common Core, we're doing our best to use it. And when we put them in the sync solution, it gives us an electronic platform to then be able to have everybody locate the materials and use the materials at the fingertips. But with that said, there will be purchases that we're going to need some bank in order to have a fully Common Core-aligned curriculum. We just don't want to make those purchases until we know exactly what we need.
Can you, again, tell me what you mean by materials?
Resources. Like.
An example?
Well, like for math, we're using some of, some of our everyday math student workbooks, you know, student practice books. Some of those, there are things in there that are very aligned to the Common Core, so we're going to continue to use those. In literacy, some of the text that we have, especially text that we have more than one copy of, the text complexity or the level of the text may fit very well at a new grade level, and it's still a very appropriate text for students to read, so we're going to re-purpose or reuse that, repurpose that text to use it in a different way.
And who is actually doing the loading of these resources into?
Uh, CCAT team members.
So they are the CCAT team members, and this is also considered to be professional, one of the professional development activities that went out in 2013, 2014?
Yes, this is more the curriculum alignment piece. Yeah, so that's where they spend some of their time loading resources and designing the curriculum. To have the curriculum, we need to have your resources, which we know we have the use for it. And then the idea is next year, we'll have close to a complete curriculum that we'll be able to then start training everybody on.
All right. Now, I think at the Education Committee meeting, tell me, if I'm wrong here, we said we didn't know if we were going to use sync solution next year?
Yeah, we don't have any commitment to use it next year.
All right.
We have things loaded in the system. There are other systems out there. I mean, there's, you know, I mean, I would, you know, ask the teachers what they think about it as far as, you know, user running this and effectiveness, but we have no commitment to do this.
The expectation is that we are going to move forward with it.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I would hope that, I mean, first, I would hope that we want to take advantage of the experience, but we have no final commitment to do it.
What does the, the commitment to use it next year, what's, what drives that decision? Whether you use it or not next year?
Well, we're piloting it right now. So we have a curriculum in the sync solution, so we're really taking our time to see kind of how everything comes together. And so far, so, I mean, so personally, I get some emails from staff that are piloting it, that it's been pretty exciting. So if it's an effective, if it's, if it's an effective pilot, then I will recommend that we continue to use it.
Okay.
But we're not, you know, I mean, the idea wasn't just to buy something and use it and then later on be like, this is not.
And who, I know since we're piloting this, who owns the data that we're loading into sync solutions? Just action learning, or do we, or?
It's Riverside District 96's Common Core curriculum. So it's, it's going to be different, and it's, it'll be unique to us. What the sync solution has is they front-loaded all of our Common Core objectives. They, they align the objectives in a way that makes a lot of sense for a curriculum spoken sequence. So there's a lot of stuff that comes with the program that saves us a ton of time in PD, but will we load in there? Will we personally load in there? That's ours.
Okay. And then, if you could also just, just, it's mine, where are we, what is the status of aligning our curriculum with Common Core, if you could?
Sure. I would say for ELA, most grade levels are in the wrapping-up stages. My whole, my expectation is, I know that we think we're in the wrapping-up stages right now, it's been great work, but by the end of the year, we want to have solid from beginning to end, the first trimester of, of our Common Core curriculum. The other stuff, looks like it's very close to being ready to go, but as we implement this and more people get to know, there's just going to be some more input.
I'm sorry, ELA is aligned?
ELA is very close to being aligned. We're wrapping up the final stages.
And then you said the other stuff? What is the other, did I, I might have misheard that?
No, what I said was that when we start next school year, we want to have the first three units, the first trimester, very solidly in place, ready to go. The other units are loaded and just about ready to be locked and ready to go, but what I was saying is that as we continue to implement and we continue to use the Common Core, there may be some adjustments that we're going to want to make in those units along the way next year, some minor things. So I don't want to say we're fully ready to go, we're fully aligned.
Are we still only speaking about ELA, English Language Arts? Okay. So you're close to being fully aligned, but you may find a need to make adjustments.
It's a continuous process.
Okay.
How about, how about the math? Where are we there?
Math, where, you know, I, from the feedback I'm getting and looking at the sync solution and meeting with staff, we're pretty close to having the first three units ready to go. Math started later, so again, I think if we can finalize those units, we're in a good place to start next school year. We have material and stuff in the future units, but they don't look as complete as ELA, because we need to start back in five weeks.
All right.
Can I piggyback on a couple of those questions? Out of our current curriculum now in the Common Core, how much of it is aligned? How much is our current curriculum aligned with the Common Core?
So, as far as the current curriculum, not, not very close at all. Some of the materials we can repurpose.
Are you saying none, 10%, 20%?
I would say it's closest to 10%.
So you mean to tell me this, nothing? Our current curriculum, we've been teaching this year or last year, none of it matches the Common Core? 10%?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, most of, and, I mean, most of the school districts had to re, you know, redesign their curriculum. There are materials and there are things that we are using that we have, but we're using them in different places. And I haven't figured out the exact percentage, you know, to be honest with you, but, I mean, I would, I would say this is pretty much probably a curriculum, would you say?
Yes.
That's English, English Language, or all?
English, Spanish, and that?
All.
Yes, all.
So the takeaway is that we're spilling it from scratch?
Oh, yeah.
We're using the content that we already have available to us.
It's very diverse. The standards are very diverse.
Brian, could, could we just step back a second? Could, could follow up maybe on Michael's question? Other districts have Common Core that's implemented. What keeps us from using the curriculum that's put together for Barrington School District, or Hensdale, or Lynn Ellen, for an example? Why do we need, or why have we needed to create our own?
Well, it, there's a couple of that. I mean, first of all, whatever the school district are doing, if they're doing, if they're creating their own, it's their curriculum, so it's not something you can just say, hey, we want your, we want your curriculum. Some districts are buying packaged materials, and there's a ton out there. A lot of the research out there says, hold, don't do that, because in my other district, we spent close to a million dollars on materials, and you start to find out that they're not as aligned as they appear to be from the publishers.
Just because the publisher puts a label sticker on the front that says, Common Core aligned.
And the other part of that too, exactly. And there's a lot of, there's an American Girl curriculum that has a stamp.
That's awesome.
There's a lot out there. But the other part too, though, Randy, is to do it the way that we're doing it, our teachers are mastering those standards. They have to know those standards like, like back of their hand, because they are designing curriculum based on those standards, so they're not just taking a book and saying, okay, I'm going to teach Common Core, and they're teaching the book and not really sure they're mastering the standards. They know the standards in and out, and that's, that's, I think, the most important part.
So we're leading that change, instead of the, that, that package off-the-shelf curriculum leading the change?
Yes.
We're leading it.
Yes, we're leading it, and we're owning the standards.
Our staff owns them.
Right.
And that, that makes.
Yeah.
Brian, we have, I guess, there's a team doing this for each grade level, is that correct? First, you know, through eighth, and ELL. Well, math, ELA, and ELL, is that?
Math and ELA.
Okay, math and ELA. And, let's see if I lost my questionnaire. And so there, and there's what, about three or four people per grade level? So they are, that group is very, very mastering those standards. Can you make me, help me make the leap between those people, those three or four per grade level, and the rest of the staff?
Great question. So on April 28th, it's our institute day, a lot of the work that we've been doing is going to be shared, there's your surprise guys? With, with the rest of the staff. I know they've been really excited and eager. We wanted to make sure we had almost finished product to show them, so it's less overwhelming. And then hopefully the PD for next year just pull up everything.
All right.
You know, that's, that's a big goal of mine, is to have that time, because, you know, I, I don't want it to be a situation where my child is in so, so class was on CCAT, so they're, they have this knowledge and they're doing these things, and my child is on, you know, so is us who isn't, and they might not have the knowledge, so we need to build that together.
You said that institute day is April 28th?
Twenty-eighth.
Yeah. And how much of that six hours would be designated to Common Core?
The entire day is Common Core.
Six-hour day?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you think that you'll be able to accomplish?
It'll be very introductory for those that are not in CCAT. Some of our CCAT team members will be leading in the community. Another surprise.
Surprise.
But we're, we're going to have different stations based on where people are in the process, basically.
So they'll, it'll leave plenty to do for, for next year.
Yeah, yeah. But we're going to get, you know, everyone's mind wrapped around it, thinking about it, excited about it, yeah. We're going to build background now, basically.
I actually had a question that came up tonight at the, the Policy Committee meeting. We have a Policy 660 which outlines a litany of curriculum content that we are mandated to cover by the state, and I'm just curious about, I'll be very brief, but rattle off a few of these things. You did a good job, David, actually, earlier. Character education, internet safety, patriotism, you know, I could go on, but it's a long list. You can read it on our policy manual. How does that fit in to this process, or does it? I mean, we have to deliver these by, by law, so.
It's twofold. Some of it fits nicely with, you know, some of the great themes, because Common Core's theme-based interdisciplinary units against. So some of that stuff fits in nicely, but some of it doesn't. Internet, I mean, and we haven't tackled it yet, but in the past, it ends up being like a two- or three-day learning experience that isn't necessarily aligned. So our goal is to tie all of them together as closely as possible, but fortunately with so many, there does seem to be some things that just don't necessarily seem to fit well. But I think.
Well, like, for example, the internet safety. We're hoping with the direction of a new technology person that we can facilitate that through our library media specialist, so that every student, because they go into the library, they see that same teacher, can get that same instruction, and it's all aligned district-wide to have like internet safety. So that's one avenue we could use to address that policy.
Okay.
Yeah, and there are some 21st century themes that we're trying, we're going to incorporate into our Common Core curriculum, those, some, some of those, because they're wrong as well.
All right. Any more questions? Thank you very much.
And my one last comment, I mean, my one last guiding principle is for rigorous communications. That all staff took the Five Essential Survey last week in each of our buildings, and our students are taking it this week, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and then we're, our principals are sending reminders to our parents at each of our buildings to make sure that they complete the parent portion as well, and all of these results will be reported in the October district newsletter, excuse me, district state report card that comes out from ISBE.
All right, thank you. I know many parents and students will be interested in that. Anyway, thank you. From the school board committees.
Do you want the enrollment report?
Do, Bob, do you want to talk about the enrollment report at all?
No changes, right? No change enrollment.
There's no changes. No. It's just your regular, it's the regular monthly one.
All right. All right, thank you for the question. And now from the school board committees, from the Education Committee.
Yes, we met on Tuesday, April 1st, and the major centerpiece of the discussion was the professional development proposal, which we will further discuss tonight, and I don't think I need to go into any too much detail on that. We also had a special ed presentation. We had a discussion on the Policy 730 student assignment and inter-district transfer policy and decided to, we were going to, or we did approve a first reading of a small, minor change to that tonight, but some of the other questions of student assignment and class size, I think we sort of deferred to a future meeting. We had a discussion of RTI. We had a discussion of RTI, Intervention, and then a summer school discussion. Any other comments?
All right, um, next, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee. Uh, the Finance Committee has not met since, since 3/19. Our next committee meeting is 5/6 at 7:00 PM, and an update on the Architective Record will be given under New Business.
All right, thank you. Okay, David, um, Policy Committee.
Uh, the Policy Committee met prior to this meeting. It was a well-run meeting, I'd say. And, uh, at the, at the meeting, we, we approved for a second reading, uh, three policies related to member, Board Member Code of Conduct, abused and neglected child reporting, and ethics of, ethics and conduct. Those three policies have been advanced to this board regular business meeting for final, final adoption. We also held a first readings of a number of additional policies, including a policy on Terms and Conditions of Employment and Dismissal. One, Art mentioned, Policy 660 on Curriculum Content, a policy on Community Resource Persons and Volunteers, a new policy that was created under the new law called Aaron's Law, Teen Dating Violence prohibited, and two other policies, one on Extracurricular Athletics and Visitors, two, and conduct on school property. Additionally, we had some discussions regarding the, uh, the policy on Superintendent Spending Limit. That is going to be a discussion that has been referred over to the Finance Committee, as well as a, we had discussions regarding purchasing the ISB's administrative procedures, so that our district finally have an actual procedures manual that would support all our policies. And that also, because it has a financial impact, was, was referred over to the Finance Committee to, to lead this committee for the, for further discussion. We also, we, as Art mentioned, also, we did conduct a first reading on Policy 730 on Student Assignment and Intra-District Transfer. That was just a minor technical amendment there. I reported that there was no, I had nothing further to report on Policy 530 on the Hiring Process and Criteria, but hope to have something to provide to the members shortly. And that is, that's, is my recap of the Policy Committee meeting.
All right, thank you. I think we, the Working Committee, I think we're, you've delivered your work, so maybe we can, maybe in the future, get that one off. Unless you want to start another Working Committee? All right, um, Board Liaisons.
I don't have anything.
PLT meeting, the last PLT meeting we had was 3/20, and we discussed, um, district school supply lists, and the fact that we are going to try to have those similar by grade across the district, and the PTOs and PTAs will be investigating potentially a way to have a district-wide school supply program through one vendor across the district. Probably not this year, next year, but it's, they're talking about it. And we also talked about the calendar process and creating the calendar for next year.
All right, uh, and then, um, just let me ask, just to make a note, the PLT meeting meets, um, what, what day?
Once a, usually once a month after the Wednesday after the board meeting.
So then it will meet?
But we're not meeting tomorrow, because we're having, she's having individual meetings by school.
Okay, all right, so it's once a month after the board meeting?
Correct.
And then, um, if you could also tell me, when does the, um, Board Liaison with the REC, when does that one meet?
First Thursday of the month.
Thank you. Riverside Education Council, um, Bill. I don't see Patty here.
She's not here.
Are you, first of all, if you would stand up, I'd like to announce that you are, have just been elected.
We just had an election at our last meeting, and we've got a new board for next year, starting in July. So, I'll be the president. Helen Bryan is remaining on as the vice president. So, looking forward to continuing to work there.
Are there any other officers, it's just president and vice president, that were elected?
We elected, there was president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and then five building representatives. I don't remember all the people right now, but, um, some people stayed, some people changed.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, Bill, and congratulations.
Thank you.
And also, thank you for serving, or for your, yeah, for serving next year. All right, thank you very much. All right, financial information items. Does anybody have any questions or comments? We have the invoice and spending report, financial statements, current expenditures?
Can I just add, just say something on, on the financial statements? At the Finance Committee meeting, I have a detailed analysis of the three years for the third quarter, so presented, and we'll discuss the fluctuations between year to year in budget action.
All right, I have a question on the invoices. You have brought to our attention, um, the invoices for Net 56?
Okay.
And the, what is it, the interim Technology Director?
Yes.
Is that position going away now that we have our new?
As soon as someone is, starts, yes.
All right, so if-
So we need somebody until that person officially starts.
So if we hire somebody, or when we hire somebody, that, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That clarification?
I have a question on the AT&amp;T anticipated expenditure. So is that going to be a full, complete compliance check to make sure that-
Yes, it is.
And a check of all our phone systems?
Yes, it is. That's the setup charge, and then after that, it's going to be a $60 a month maintenance charge.
Okay. And constant checking, make sure that the lines work and?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Is AT&amp;T our phone provider?
Yes, they provide all those.
But that's just going out of the buildings, and within the buildings, we have this voice-over-IP, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, um. I guess next, we've got the payable pre-list. So those are the invoices. All right. May I, may I have a motion to approve the payment, per payment, the list of general invoices, Schedule A74, as presented, if they're?
Second.
Juanita, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the list of general invoices. Juanita, can you call the roll?
Excuse me, Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
David Kadama?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Lisa Gaynor?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Arthur Perry?
Aye.
Mary Rosmandia?
Aye.
The payable pre-list of general invoices has been approved. Next would be board policies for final adoption. We have three policies that had their second reading earlier today. As David mentioned, they are the Board Member Code of Conduct, the Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace, Tobacco Prohibition, and our Ethics and Conduct. So, I would, a motion to approve these as official, to adopt them, um, as official policies.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we adopt the three policies that we mentioned earlier. Juanita?
Arthur Perry?
Aye.
David Kadama?
Aye.
Lisa Gaynor?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
Aye.
Mary Rosmandia?
Aye.
The policies are adopted. Next, um. The approval of E-Rate, this would be a motion that the Board of Education accept with the E-Rate funding for Comcast enterprise business services as presented. I know we want to have some discussion.
Yes.
Do, do we go motion first, then discussion?
Yep.
I, I make a motion that, uh, we approve the E-Rate document.
All right.
All right, now, just, go ahead, Zach.
Well, I just want to talk about the process and how this all came about. At the open forum meeting, it was discussed that we needed increased bandwidth, which brought about the whole gig. And that was in February, and, and the implementation was, I guess, discussed, we're going to do this July, August, hopefully to get it aligned. That being said, the timeline for E-Rate for this coming year was to get a RFP by February 20th. So, worked with our consultant, very knowledgeable of the RFPs and the whole Comcast bandwidth and all that.
But who was the consultant?
Tele Solutions.
Okay.
So, and they also gave me recommendations. I, I know there's been discussions about five years being too long, but for the best price, the lowest price, five years is, is the norm. If you want anything less than five years, the price would skyrocket. So that was the reason for the length of time. Secondly, we currently use Comcast now. Happy with their service. It's, in regards to the terms of the contract, it's, it's similar to what we're doing now, so, uh, there were some discussions about what it would cost if somebody came out after service hours. That's the same contract we have now, that's the same wording we have with our Comcast now. We've never incurred extra charges because something happened after hours. Usually, we don't know about it till we see it the next day, and it's during hours, so. So the, the RFP went out February 20th. It had to be out for 28 days. We received the bids, bids back on March 20th. We had to turn it around by the 25th in order to be eligible for E-Rate, which is a 40% discount. We did that, we received two bids, we, um, Net 56 and Comcast, and Comcast came back. They met, they were equal with Net 56, except Comcast did have the lowest price. The question was, there was two prices here, and the proposal from Comcast, um, one quote was for 500 meg between buildings, which was the 5,000, 5,800. The 6,200 was for one gig between the two, that was the difference in cost. So we, we completed the 471 by the 25th, submitted it for approval contingent on board approval and E-Rate approval. So both those had, do not happen. We will not have Comcast as of July 1st.
Did our interim Technology Director participate in reviewing the, the RFP, the bids?
No.
They were quoting?
They were quoting it?
They were quoting, that's why they could not.
Oh, they were quoting?
I could not share any information with, with Net 56.
How much difference in price between the two bidders?
Net 56 was approximately 9, 9,500. And Comcast was 6,200.
95?
That's per year?
Yes.
Right, so, the motion on the floor is to accept the contract. But, people that, whose opinion I value a lot through emails, and as, as we heard David's point tonight, you know, people who know far better about this than me are saying, don't accept this proposal. What if we table this or wait? You know, do we have to accept this tonight? Or can we wait, you know, could we wait till July 2nd? They're going to turn the internet off on us? Or can we, you know, push this down the road another month to, to get the answers?
No, Comcast, well, because of the turnaround that they need to start July 1st and E-Rate approval process, gave till this board meeting to make the decision. So to prove it is not accepted, I actually have to notify Comcast tomorrow and say, we are not accepting your, your contract.
And so Zach, if we say we aren't accepting the contract, what? What happens?
I'm sorry?
If we say we're not accepting it, what happens?
Then we'll wait for next year, for the E-Rate processing.
So we would still have Comcast service, it would be higher priced, no?
We'll have Comcast at 100 meg, a meg wide, rather than one gig.
So the increase in bandwidth would go, is not, I mean, we'd have to go out to bid-
We're not doing anything, we're just sticking with what we have.
Oh, okay.
Well, we have two quotes, one for 500 and, and the other one's for one gig. I thought, I thought I heard you say there's two, two prices.
There's two prices. It's a gig going out from the building to the, to Comcast, but then between buildings, like Hollywood and, one was 500, one was one gig.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not sure I see that actually, though, I'm a little confused by what we're looking at here.
If you look on. If you look at the drawing. This one right here?
Page?
It is page.
There's no pages on it?
Eight.
Page numbers.
Well, no, there's page numbers on here. With the cloud.
I think it's page eight in the PDM.
Okay, I got the cloud.
And you can see that the 500, 500 meg on the side, and there's a one, the gig on the side.
I understand that. Where is the cost? I see one cost, I see 5,200.
That is the cost for, that is the cost for the, you don't have the last three pages?
The last three pages of the table with a whole bunch of different-
That's the cost for gig from building.
6,200.
Okay. So it does, is there a total?
Yes, 6,200 on the cost.
Versus Net 56, who was 9,500, is that?
Correct.
And how does this compare to what we're, what we pay now?
We pay $200 a month per building for 100, 100.
So, all right, we got to do the math, 200 per building.
That's a thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars per month.
Per month, 12 grand? So you're saying they're charging us 12 grand for slower service, but now they're charging us 6,200 per year for faster?
No, no, it's per month. 6,200 per month. So we're going from 1,000 to 6,200.
Before E-Rate, before.
Before E-Rate.
What is, 6,200 is before E-Rate?
So then it drops down to 30, 3,000.
Say that again, David?
So, so then it drops down to 3,120 dollars.
3,100, let's just say, verse 1,000, right now roughly, that we're paying per month? So for an extra, I don't know, what, 2,100 bucks?
2,100 bucks a month.
Times 12, you know, don't quote me on this, but what, that's about 24 grand?
25.
For faster service?
Right.
And if we don't do this today, it deals off-
Then we're going to probably stick with what we have for a year.
For a year.
Correct.
I don't know, it's only a year. I, I hate that, look, I hate the fact that people whose opinions we respect are telling us not to sign this contract, and that we kind of have a gun to our head to do something today.
I totally agree with you.
But isn't that going to be at our head next, next year?
Sorry?
Yeah, but you have a-
I, I was just going to finish by saying, I think that we just need to know if we decide to not push, move forward with this, what we're doing.
Right, if we don't-
We're not going to do anything for a year, so.
It's okay.
I, I agree, I'm not thrilled about the timing of this either. And again, I'd rather, would have seen these numbers sort of laid out, but-
All right, and can't we, I mean, Comcast likes making a buck, just like the next person, can't we come back and say, sorry, we didn't approve it? Can we renegotiate until we get some answers? We had serious questions and issues, can we approve this next month? What are they going to say? They're capitalists.
Is it the, but is Comcast the problem, or is- Is it the, but is Comcast the problem, or is E-rate, the E-rate process the problem?
The E-rate process, it already went through the bid process, so you can't make changes after the, after the bid process.
Were all the bids five-year terms?
Yes.
Is that standard practice in the industry? Does that not belong?
Well, no, you can get shorter contract, it just costs more per month.
But so next year, do we have to go through, is this E-rate that we've negotiated good for five years, or do every year we have to reapply for the E-rate?
No, it's good for the five years. But if we went out for E-rate again next year, if we didn't accept this, we have to go through the process again.
Right, but you don't hit, so, once you complete the process, you sign a contract for five years, you've, you no longer have to do the E-rate until the contract is up, and then you got to go through the process again.
All right, so if we don't approve this, the E-rate's off the table, can we apply next year for the E-rate and we'll probably get it?
Yes, yes.
So, my inclination would be to stay with what we have till next year, what's the problem if we do that?
So the main question would be, how well is the 100, the current service, meaning that our educational needs? Teachers?
Anyone?
This is what you get, I mean, I was here in February, and I heard everyone in the community say they wanted more. That 100 meg wasn't enough. Well, that's the community... I've never had a problem with it, and politicians have...
Yes.
Thank you.
So I don't know, but...
Can I ask one more?
I heard a lot of community...
I'm just worried about the park assessments.
Can we, can people...
That's a good point.
Can people raise their hands and ask to be recognized by the chair, please?
Let's pop up the microphone, actually.
Yeah, that's also a good thing. I guess we've decided this is...
Before we start that, can I ask one question, Zach? Is the, is this, the proposal is for the five-year contract, that, since that's the bid, we can't do a less year contract?
No.
Because I want, because why I ask is because maybe one-year contract is more money, but at least it would give us the out if we wanted to renegotiate something else for next year. But we could still have our one gig this year. But, I guess...
Yes.
Wow.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Mr. Barsati? Okay.
One thing that I didn't mention as well, sort of about this five-year agreement, is that, right now, one gig sounds like great. What's it going to sound like in three years? And you're going to be locked into a five-year agreement in three years with this one gig, and it might be like 100 gigs this year, we don't know. How many, I mean, how many commuters are going to be hitting the network, how, what's your bandwidth internally? I mean, there's a lot of things that go into this 100 gig. I mean, are you even going to recognize the 100 gig, given the infrastructure you have in place? There's just a lot of questions that, in my opinion, haven't been answered.
Can I make a recommendation that we, because there have been so many concerns from community members that, you know, shared the emails with all of us earlier this week and today, that we wait until the technology director is hired and then have him or her review this and make a recommendation? After they look at our infrastructure, yes, I agree that we're going to lose our E-rate funding, it will be there next year, the prices may change, but I think for us to make the decision right now, I'm all for the increased bandwidth, I think our teachers need it, I think our students need it, I think we're going to need it for park assessments, but I don't, if you all don't feel comfortable making that decision right now...
I have a few more questions, and they may be rhetorical questions, it's okay if you don't have an answer, but if that's the route we, if that's the route we take, then what I want to know is, if, how, how does the five-year contract situation sit with E-rate? I mean, we have to get the bid approved by E-rate, but that doesn't mean, does that mean we get the E-rate for five years? Or do we have to continually apply for it?
No, we get the E-rate for five years.
Okay.
You have to continually apply for it if you want to do other telecommunications projects. So if we wanted to do something else, we already have VoIP, but if you want to do something else, like with our intercom system, we'd have to apply for another E-rate grant and tell them what the project is.
Okay, I would like to know what the, because, you know, five years is a long time, I'm totally not comfortable with that. But what were the, do we have numbers for the lower year?
No.
No, okay, can we scope that out at least, just to see what kind of...
Yeah.
...range we're talking about? Like, is it just $1,000 more a month? Is it $25 a month more? I don't know, you know? Just so we can figure out what the options are.
I didn't check my email today, but it sounds like there was a flurry of activity in the last couple of days on this, is that true?
So... The Net 56 was a different topic, wasn't it?
No, I'm just saying about...
E-rate?
E-rate, about the comments coming about holdoff on signing the contract, is that...
No, I didn't get a single email about that. Did you?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Yeah, yes. There were like, wasn't it like a chain of about four or five people?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, I wasn't included.
It came a distant second to the professional development emails, but...
Okay. So could, Michael, could you talk about...
Yeah, I, I don't know what, you know, I really feel that I'm, you know, handcuffed here, because like Paula's comment, you're right, we sat here in February and all she heard was more speed, and now we have a chance to get more speed. But, you know, people whose opinions we respect here, that we saw, we all saw the emails, are telling us not to do this, not to do this contract. And so, you know, what, you know, I, I'm to the point of, so what, we wait a year, what, it's a big deal. We save a couple of bucks, I mean, it's, you know, we get someone in place that can, can make that call for us, and we get the, the questions that are answered. That's where I'm leaning.
If the new tech guy, tech person wants bigger bandwidth, we have to wait for E-rate, we can't do it before that, right?
We can, but we wouldn't get the 40% discount.
And maybe we only do that for a year, and then we can apply for the E-rate for that project, maybe we pay a higher cost for the interim.
I mean, so we could have an interim solution, the cost is might be as low as an E-rate, but we could still have it.
The only thing with that is, to get the E-rate approval, you have to follow the E-rate bid process, so you have to make sure that you're doing everything according to what E-rate guidelines are for the bid process. If you wanted to do something...
Your interim stuff has to be within the scope of the E-rate process. Is that possible?
Yeah.
Right.
So if we wanted to upgrade, let's just say in July, going up from our, to one gig, and we started that process, we would pay quote-unquote retail until the following July, because then in February, we'd start the E-rate process again, correct? Okay, so we could still do that. So we could pay retail from, basically, let's just say we go from July to July, so for one fiscal year, then start the E-rate process again, and then have our technology director assess that and let us know if that's the best way to go.
Well, hold on, sorry. So, one year would be a special one-year contract with whatever vendor we go with, not under E-rate?
Correct.
And then we start the E-rate process again for some other bid next year.
Right.
We'll pay retail, and it's a one-year contract, so it'll probably be more money that, because of that as well.
Correct.
So, we could potentially be spending a lot more money just for the one year.
Just for the one year. And then we can see if we really need that, and if we don't need it, maybe 500 is enough, I mean, or like David said, maybe we just do 500 for a year and then assess it again and say, "No, it wasn't enough, we need one gig for the park assessments."
And if we're going to spend all this money, what are we going to do, July 1st? No one's going to be here using that much gig or...
The only, the only question I have, though, is, the way, and maybe you can help us understand this, but in order, a project like this is essentially digging tunnels and putting wiring into the buildings, and then that cost is sort of spread out over five years, which is what I think goes into the pricing. So we need to understand if that, what you just said is even an option for just one year, I guess.
And the proposal by Comcast, it's just more speed, or does this include all the digging and everything?
They said no additional costs, it includes everything.
Sounds too good to be true. It does, it does.
Well, it's written, it's in...
So could, could I ask, David, you looked, sounds like you looked at the contract closely?
I just looked at it.
Yes, and what's your expertise again? You're, well, you, you explained before.
Comic core. What should we do on that, David?
I'm a project manager in integrated technology, generally medical projects, medical devices and EHRs.
Okay.
So that's what I've been doing for the last several years.
Now, Zach, we had a vendor who helped us assemble this bid, this bid process, right? We worked through a consultant. So, just kind of curious, how should we, you know, given the comments that Dave and some of the other community members made, how should we view their service, you know? If we now have a contract we can't sign, or, you know, we recommend we don't sign, is there...
Is he a consultant for us, or is he just the matchmaker?
No, he's our, he's our E-rate consultant.
And he has been for how many years, Zach? It's not Jerry, is it?
It's Jerry, he's been, I think, at least 10 years here.
Okay, so he's been a...
Very well-known in...
No, I know, I know you said he has a good reputation, but maybe he didn't, not, you know, nail down all the details, or...
Well, what's the scope of his service that he offers?
Well, he, he knows everything about E-rate rules and guidelines, and he maintains all our E-rate files. So forever audited, they just go to him, he can produce the files and paperwork they need.
Is that more of a, like, a legal service or a technologies expertise that you have to have to be an E-rate consultant?
I just know he's very knowledgeable about, about the E-rate, the whole E-rate process, and that's, he has a reputation for that, too.
So does he participate in the RFP process?
He, he's the one that wrote...
He wrote the RFP, and did he write, he wrote it for five years?
Correct.
Well, that, maybe that was our first fault. And does he review the contracts?
Yes, he does.
The bids afterwards?
Yes, he does. He's the one that recommended the board approval and the E-rate approval that's put into the contract.
And does he negotiate any of the terms with any of the providers?
No, no.
And we can't do that?
No.
What, I'm sorry? Because of the E-rate rules?
Yes.
Oh, I see. No, I don't, but... Yes, um, could you stand up and say your name?
My name is Leilani Navarro, and I actually worked for a vendor, a couple of vendors, IBM and AT&amp;T, at their network operations. So, my question is kind of, what are they going to be responsible for coming into the building, and what kind of wiring are they offering us? Because if we, if they're giving us 500, or if they're giving us one gig, if we don't have the infrastructure inside the building to pass that pipe, it's kind of like I was telling Michael, we're drinking from a fire hydrant, and it's not, you know, it's...
It won't matter.
It won't matter how much we're getting from the vendor if we can't support it inside. So how much, like, is the router, is that coming from them, or what are they actually delivering?
And this is with my discussion with Matt. We have the equipment here, some of the equipment we have to handle, and some will be provided by Comcast that'll enable us to handle the one gig.
So we'd have to purchase more equipment?
But that's in the contract.
Yeah, and the estimates were, there may be about $1,000, $1,200 worth of equipment that will have to be purchased on...
Now, is that at each site, or at each school, or just...
So, all, all five buildings.
That's part of the contract?
No, that was additional.
That's additional. That old additional, when you sign into a contract, "Oh, you have to buy this, too." You have to get that.
Chartered.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
My other question is that, after, let's say, a couple of years, because in technology, we know Moore's Law, we study this, and it basically says that in 18 months, whatever is the latest and greatest is going to be obsolete. So, with that being said, you know, one gig is the latest and greatest right now, but there is 10 gig that is coming out, it's called 10-gig Ethernet, that's coming out really soon. So, my question is, in two years, will you be able to renegotiate with the existing contract? Is there a clause in there where you can renegotiate at that time?
Do the refi, right?
Yeah, I, I would think they'd want to, but they think, but, you know, I probably heard enough to say that trying to move ahead, as much as I'd like to move ahead and get better speed, you know, Leilani and David, people who, you know, I've spent time with and talk to and respect your opinions, say, say, "Don't do it." And you know what? I'm on the table that, I'm not going to do it.
Every step forward is a step back.
I totally agree. I feel bummed out that we can't do it, but I feel more bummed that we're going to get locked into something that may cost us more down the road.
And that, that does align with your recommendation as well.
What do you think, Art?
I, I actually agree. I, I think, as I said before, I'd like to, this was a learning process, and I'd like to thank all the input from everybody who also know more than I do. I think we should go forward, engaging our, whoever is going to be in our district, you know, technology leadership position, to take this on. I think we should look at more than just a five-year possible bid for the next try, we should get bids for a variety of terms and see, so we can balance the price versus the, you know, commitment there. Because, yeah, I think five years is a long time, if we can figure out a shorter term and the price is a little bit more, it might be worth it to have that flexibility.
Right.
And also, I do think some of the points raised about what we need to be looking for in these RFPs needs to be addressed, so that we have all those questions answered going into this.
All right, and then I'd remind everyone that the motion on the floor is to accept this contract, so if you vote yes, you are accepting this contract.
And I guess, thank you, and I guess we can proceed that the recommendation is to vote no, or we could, I guess that would be the simplest thing, or we could just withdraw the motion?
So we vote down?
We might, it's essentially, if it gets voted down, it's the same as not doing anything.
Yeah, my only, my only two, two comments, or one comment, one question, is, yeah, I don't see why we don't even just try to buck the trend. You know, the trend right now, the standard is a five-year contract, let's see if we can get the shorter contract, let's see if we can have a, you know, a five-year but with a two-year, you know, potential option, to see, you know, if things are, if there's greater advancements in technology, which I think we all expect or would be, within, you know, every year, every two years, there's, there's, things are improved upon that we can renegotiate, you know, something, you know, let's be, get creative. The other question I have, though, I just want confirmation that at current speed surface right now, that our curriculum is not being impinged upon, that we're not, I heard before with the, before we did the bump up, you know, there was things that we couldn't do, there was definite, we, they, people felt the, the lack of bandwidth. Now at 100, are we still feeling that?
I, I mean, if I could just answer quickly, I'm hoping that it's still on the table to try to take a look at it, and create something for next year, that there might be another way of doing it.
Well, okay.
I think there are running issues, especially with the Comcast, but not just that. There's a lot more media that is incorporated into curriculum nowadays, and that has really clogged up our, our systems. And again, I know later on, we're going to talk about professional time and the importance of it, and we just can't, we can't lose any more instructional time based on the technology not working as well as we need to, because I can take that a whole time.
All right, let me guess, you need more professional development.
I would, I would like to just add, what I think the superintendent already mentioned is that we explore possible short-term enhancements, they may or may not be available, I don't know if we're maxed out at 100 MIPS based on what connectivity we have right now, but whatever, if we can get more than that with the, you know, short of engaging in a big project like this.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Say we vote.
All right, Juanita.
Randy Brockway?
No.
Lisa Gaynor?
No.
David Goddarmo?
No.
Rachel Morella?
No.
Michael O'Brien?
No.
Arthur Perry?
No.
Mary Rosmandia?
No. The vote, I'm not going to enter into any rate contract this year, thank you. Next. Professional development. All right. I'm going to, I guess, make a motion, or ask for a motion, that the board approve the professional development proposal, option five as presented. Somebody want to?
Someone move? I'm sorry.
Second, second? I'll second it, just, all right. And I think Babna is going to just talk a little bit about the options. And she's-
Are we supposed to?
Yes. Okay, just for all of you in the audience, I want you to know that a very, very long time ago, I taught middle school math. And so I'm going to attempt to recreate that today, and hopefully you'll be able to follow me. But the purpose of us doing this hands-on activity is to demonstrate to all of you that when the committee got together, which was of teacher leadership as well as district leadership, principals and directors, got together to look at the professional development options. We presented on April 1st at the Education Committee four options. And then at the conclusion of that meeting, Mrs. Morella asked that if we could have a, kind of a blended program of option two and option three, which was twice a month or a bimonthly early release, and if one of those professional developments of those months, excuse me, one of those days of the month could be where teachers have an extended day. Part of the collective bargaining agreement that the teachers follow is that they have 15 45-minute extended day times that we could capture for professional development. So we'd like to go through, does everybody have a blank calendar here at the table? So I want to show you how we came up with our plan. Okay, so last, a couple of weeks ago with our last meeting, we said that we would highly recommend having 4, 54 hours of PD, and PD meaning professional development. Can you see that? Okay. That 54 would come from, we have currently, for next school year, we've adopted a calendar with four institute days at six hours each for a total of 24 hours. So 54 minus 24 is 30 hours that we're still looking to capture throughout the 14, 15 school year. Everybody with me so far? Okay. Now I'm going to change colors. So I'm going to try option, present to you option five. Option five is going to be two times a month. And we are going to pick with and recommend Mondays because there are the fewest Mondays throughout the school year. So we picked Mondays. We also looked at, that's the least disruptive to after-school activities, athletics, or any type of enrichment programs. We picked Mondays. Hypothetically, we are just going to say it's going to be the first and third attendance Monday of the month. So if you see, we're going to start with September because we have two institute days already in August. And I apologize if it's, I want you to be able to see the whole thing if you can't see the numbers, so I'm sorry. So we're going to go with the 8th and the 22nd. So that's two. Then we're going to go with the 6th and the 20th, so that's also two. And then the 3rd and the 17th, two. And then the 1st and the 15th, two. Going to January, we're going to go to the 5th. But then the 3rd is the 19th, which is Martin Luther King Day. We're going to go to the 26th. So that 3rd Monday would be the 26th, so that'd be two. Got that, moms? And then the 1st for February would be the 2nd. The 3rd Monday is President's Day, so we're going to skip that to the 23rd, so that's two. In March, we would do the 2nd and the 16th for two. And then for April, we would do the 13th and 27th for two. For May, we would do the 4th and the 18th for two. And then Monday, June 1st for one. Okay? So total, that would be, I'm sorry, this is option five. Total, that would be 19 days. Two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18, 19. Okay, so 19 days in the month. We would say that the first Monday of every month would be a one-hour early relea-, excuse me, a one-hour early release. It would be, for elementary students, it would be at 2 o'clock. And for Hauser students, it would be at 2:15. And then staff would have professional development from 2:15 to 3:15. And that would be, since there's 10, 10 times, be 10 days. At one hour equals 10 hours. Then, we said the remaining nine Mondays would be the extended staff day. So that would be an hour plus the 45 minutes that they're required to stay for the contract. That would be nine days times 1.75 hours, which is an hour and 45 minutes. And that equals 15.75 hours.
I'm sorry, those nine days, this would take place after school?
Correct.
Okay.
So it would be the early release plus the additional 45 minutes that teachers are required to stay. So they would use nine of their 15 once a month.
So school ends at normal times on those nine months?
No, no. It would still be the early release. So it would be an hour for the early release plus the 45 minutes of the staff development for the extended staff day for the contract.
What are you guys going to do about kindergarten, being the half-day program?
We're going to talk about that.
Can I ask about the other six extended days for the RAC?
Yes, we're going to get to that. So this is 25.75 hours. Plus the 24 hours back up here for institute days.
So we're getting close.
So now we're at 49.75 hours. So this option is four and a quarter hours less than what we need. So about a half-day compared to the 54.
Can I ask why we picked Monday?
Because there's the least amount of Mondays in the school year. There's only 30. And the sports and after-school activities don't happen on Monday. So there's no, like, meets or games, things like that. Okay, so now option six. What we're going to do is, we are going to go to every Monday. So now what we're doing is, we're adding, for September, it's going to be four. For October, it's going to be three. We're only adding one more because we have Columbus Day on that Monday. For November, we're only adding one because we have parent-teacher conferences, so that's also three. For December, it's one, so we're at three. For January, it's just one, so that'll be three. For February, it's one more, so it's also three. For March, it's two more because we have four weeks, so it'd be four. For April, it'd be one, so we're still at three. For May, it'd be one, so we're at three. And it's the same for June. So that gives us option six, which is weekly. 30 days. And we have, it's actually 21 one-hour. So we would still do the every Monday, one hour. 21 days. Times one hour equals 21 hours. Then we have the nine days, we're going to follow the same once a month, that staff would stay extra. So nine days times 1.75, so it's that one hour and 45 minutes would give us... I have a cheat sheet here. 15.75, which is the same. And then it's 36.75. Plus the 24 hours that we set for institute days. And that gives us 60.75 hours of PD. And so that gives us almost 6.75 hours more, which is almost a full day if we go weekly that time. So our bill is going to address the six additional times to the contract. And then we're going to go over the pros and cons and also talk a little bit about kindergarten. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
So as you know, the contract says that teachers can be required to be at school 45 minutes 15 times a year. With this section of the contract in mind, we discussed with the administration how to use those 15 meetings and here is how we have discussed doing that. Where we would have, thank you, nine professional development meetings, which were just discussed. Three of them would be staff meetings, which we would have most likely one per trimester. The same thing as 5.11 in our contract. One is fall parent night, one is spring open house. And then depending if you're elementary or Hauser, you'd either have an evening school program, the holiday show, or spring program. Or Hauser teachers currently do detention duty, which is a 45-minute after-school duty that they're required to do. Adding those together, you get 15. So that's where they come from as a whole. Currently, our fall parent night is 90 minutes. We count that as two of our required 45-minute meetings. Plus the school programs and the spring open house are both more than 60 minutes, or more than 45 minutes. In the past, we've always compromised and said, they're important, we need them, they're one meeting. And in the future, if the current proposal is accepted, we would look to compromise further by counting the fall parent night as one meeting instead of the current two. Because we really, we understand, as you've heard from many of us, that we need the continuous and consistent professional development. And if compromising on that would help, we're all for it.
Bill, I have a question for you.
Yes.
That's, you know, we're supposed to have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, and specifically, it's regarding the use of the 15 meetings. How long has this been the practice of the district?
This here has not, is not, because we have not had the professional development meetings. Currently, the meetings, I can look on my email. It's mostly staff meetings. I think we have nine staff meetings currently. Hauser does two detention duties currently. There's the fall parent night, which is two, spring open house, school program. 10 staff days, so there's one a month. I can look that up if you'd like me to.
I'm just wondering, how long has been, has this been the practice of using the meetings? And I ask that because the language in the agreement, and maybe we need Patty for this, is so contrary to the way that they're being used. Because they specify that the 15 meetings are basically a committee, they're to be used for committee meetings. And I don't want to have to-
No, I just, I don't know. Because that's not what I, that's not my understanding of that. And I was on the negotiation team before that, so.
So Rachel, when you say committee meetings, how do you define that?
I don't know.
Is this a-
That's what I'm saying, is that-
Teacher committee?
Well, specifically, they talk about, and that's what I'm trying to understand, is that the meetings they're talking about, the 45 meetings, are specified between to be, not go beyond 4 o'clock? We can discuss this-
Well, it says, this is my understanding. There are 15 total meetings. Then on paragraph, paragraph four, where it references the 4 o'clock meetings, that there are six total meetings that are part and parcel to those 15. So of those 15, only six can be required for evening events.
Okay, so, and you think, and you define that as part of the 15?
Yes.
So things like parent night, open house?
So parent night, open house, programs, those have always been a part of the 15, but it's stipulated in here that four can, four can be for district level after 4 o'clock, two can be for building level after 4 o'clock.
So nine-
We have not always used the after 4 o'clock ones, but we do use all 15 meetings.
So nine should not be after 4 o'clock?
Nine, yes.
Of the 15? I'm just reversing the, the logic of the math. Can you just describe for me, for my benefit, what the staff meetings are, what that is?
It's a way to get out information, especially recently with Common Core, we've been getting a lot of updates from the committees about, this is what we're doing, this is what we need to work with.
How do these work, I mean, logistically? Everybody in the district comes to one place?
It's a, it's a building staff.
Building staff.
Building staff.
Okay.
Yes.
So committee members who participate in these things come to the building?
Come to the building.
Are they, come to this meeting in their building and share? Okay.
Because I think there's, especially with Common Core, there's someone from every building on each team, so.
Well, then how do you explain that, you know, when they're talking about the four district level meetings for school year, no more than two building level meetings, or at least say, specifically say excluding committee meetings? Okay.
Look at that.
So, all right. We have a lot of questions outstanding about these, use of these meetings, and we may need Patty, because Patty has the historical knowledge of this. Okay, thanks, Bill.
So that's-
So we're going to talk about pros and cons, correct?
And then, yeah. And I think Brian's going to help out with that. All right, Brian, let's see that. Thank you. Okay, so this was part of, well, the pros and cons wasn't included in the information that went out yesterday because we had just recently shared with the board, so we wanted to, if you guys aren't familiar, to take a look at it. But as far as, you know, option five, some of the pros are minimizes subs compared to our current plan. And I said this last time, you know, our current plan, I realize can't continue. It's not what we need to be doing for kids. Whenever you have a substitute in the classroom, it's never the same as having a teacher, especially a well-trained teacher.
I'm sorry, in option five, why would we be using subs?
We would be, well, to get to our 54 hours, which is the minimum that we're, that we're recommending, we would need at least one day of a sub. And to be at, well, the four hours, I know Dr. John wants to say that's half-day.
If we agree that 54 hours is the way to go.
Right.
Right, which is, right, that's our recommendation. So based on that 54 hours, it would, it would equal to about a full-day sub because that 4.75 hours, it's closer to a full than it is for half-day for PD. Fewer total early release days than option six, so there's less time. Some of the cons, we would still hope to get the 4.2 hours because that's kind of what we're designing on, 54 hours as a minimum. Inconsistent schedule for parent students and staff. And 19-hour bus of instruction, and I just want to talk about that a little bit. We have a little asterisk, increasing PD is higher quality instructional time. And, you know, as I started to say earlier, we may not be, we may not have an early release planned this year, but our instructional time has been compromised. And I'm going to be completely honest, it has been compromised because of all the subs that we've had in the classrooms. I say this a lot, and I told myself, stop saying this, Brian, I'm going to say it more time. We have phenomenally gifted teachers in the school district. And the opportunity to have these teachers in the classrooms where they belong is of utmost importance. The opportunity to have our teachers highly trained, as we move towards Common Core, as we move for 21st century teaching and learning, is an opportunity that I, that I believe we can't, we need to honor that opportunity. Because in that time, the instruction will be that much more focused, the instruction will be that much more current, and the instruction across the district will be that much more aligned. So it will no longer matter, as it should, who you have for fourth grade at Central and who you have for fourth grade at Ames, or who you have within schools, because we're going to be that aligned and that rigorous. So less subs, as a whole, less subs, more training, more aligned instruction, more prepared students with the written relevance that we need. So if we move that to option six, you'll see there's, there's no subs, which I personally think is a bit positive. Provides a community with the most consistency on a weekly basis. You know, and I think if people might feel differently about this, I mean, that option five for me personally, and I know it's not about me, and I promise it's not about me, would drive me crazy. And I don't even keep the calendar, my wife does. But provides staff the optimal amount of time for PD. Provides the administration with the most flexibility for planning PD to keep staff moving forward. Provides students with the most effective teaching and minimal loss of contract time, of contact time? I'm sorry about that. Provides staff the additional time needed to keep the district in compliance with state laws and mandates. The 6.75 hours are more than the 54 requested, and 11 more- and eleven more PD hours than option five to address other identified areas of the D. And then, the con is more time. More early release time means that less time in the classroom, as I said earlier. I think that, I know we'll be optimized in that time, and I don't necessarily see that as a con. We're not presenting either of these plans as a ten, you know, five, ten-year, five-year, you know, solution or anything like that. We're just, we need PD, we need it now, and we're ready to move forward.
So Bryant, the fifty-four hours. This year, you know, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, there's been professional development, but it hasn't been across the board, right? It's just been selected groups of teachers? And in, in some cases, it's been well over fifty-four for them?
Yes.
Okay, but others, it's been zilch? Okay, so that's, that's this year?
Yes.
Okay. Now, where did we come from the previous year? You know, before this whole Common Core thing? Did, was there professional development at District Ninety-Six?
I can show there's right a little that was obviously put into this year's contract, which is where, you know, when we started doing all this work, we were kind of limited, so we weren't waiting to hear it implemented. But I don't necessarily have the historical perspective of the district. I don't know.
And we had professional development on institute days, and that was it.
Okay. So that's twenty, twenty-four days, and, or twenty-four hours? Were you ever...
And then, I mean, what we would do on our own, or sometimes staff meetings, people would come in, but direct instructional kind of things were mostly on institute days.
Go on, Kurt.
I think it's important to note, too, that the professional development that we had in those institute days in the past was one topic geared to every member of our district instead of being specific to what we need. So there's a piece that you have to look at there, too.
How about seminars, conferences, and things of that nature?
In the past, or...
In the past.
That teachers attend?
Mm-hmm.
I think it depends on the teacher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, some people go, have gone to a number of conferences. Some people go to maybe just one conference a year, or some go...
We were encouraged to.
We're always encouraged to go, but it's never been...
And that would come, that would have come out of staff, out of teaching time, is that correct? So I would, can we, can we agree that conferences and seminars are, I mean, it's the past, but that they are also professional development?
They are, you would still require a sub. They would go, they would pay the conference registration fee, which could be anywhere from one hundred to three hundred dollars. And then it would still require a sub, because that teacher would have to leave the classroom, go to the conference registration, and then have a sub also in the classroom. And it wasn't consistent. So it wasn't like thirty people were going to the same conference, maybe one or two people at different buildings. And so how was that information being disseminated? It wasn't consistent, it wasn't district-wide, and it wasn't continuous.
Well, if I could just add, oh, go ahead.
And, and for next year, will we still do, be doing some of that in addition to this fifty-four hours?
I'd like to just say no, because I don't anticipate it. You know, I think that if we have planned with fifty-four, fifty-two hours, I think we'll, you know, we'll be good enough, and all the PD will be internal and aligned. I just, I'm not at a point where now I could say that would be, you know, I mean, a guarantee, because it depends kind of how things, how things are going and where we're at. I don't, I don't have any plans to do it. The other thing about conferences, too, though, is, you know, one thing that I love about both these plans is that the professional development is consistent, and it's timely, and there's, I think it was Danny who came up and said that there's accountability, because we are providing the best development going into classrooms. We're coming back a week or two weeks later, and we're reviewing, we're moving forward, and it's, it's a continuous cycle of improvement. With conferences, you go, it could be great. Unless you have the time and you have the rest of the staff that's been trained to do it, a lot of it, you go and it just sits with you, and it stops. It stops there.
I'm just asking the question, I'm not advocating. And I, I would think as part of a professional development plan, you know, I see that as bigger than just this fifty-four hours or whatever, that there would be a list of, you know, approved conferences and how people qualify to go. In other words, you know, it sounds like much of that might be ad hoc, and I would, you know...
Yeah, yeah.
And that, again, then I would tend to agree with what you just said. You just go, and, you know, it doesn't...
Well, I think, Mary Rose, we provided you that information, that this year was very limited. The only, I believe, six or eight teachers that went from the middle school was the middle school conference that was pre-approved prior to us coming, because they were presenting. But I can probably count on one hand how many teachers or staff members went to conferences this school year, because we tried to provide the professional development in-house consistently.
And I'm more or less asking about the plans for next year. You done a little bit this year, and, but this is, at the moment, I don't want to say all, all, but most of what you anticipate would be here. Yes?
Hi, I'm Christina, Deputy Gordon. I think one of the things that I keep hearing that I think just needs clarification is that the people who were taken out this year for professional development purposes, for the Common Core or whatever, they're our leaders for next year. They're being trained so that they can teach us next year about how the Common Core is working. So I can't, they're doing alignment. They're not even doing professional development for us. They're piloting so that the rest of the staff can get educated next year. So I think that's a point of, kind of, like, I'm hearing people confused about that, so I just want to clarify that the time that those people were away isn't really professional development for the whole staff. It's them helping us design.
Start training the trainer kind of concept.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. They, I don't know if I'm going to say this, but we're going to have thirty experts in the ELA Common Core Center, and about twenty experts in the Master Center. Because again, how we're designing the curriculum.
So we don't have to send people out?
No, we shouldn't.
Because our experts are here. We're building capacity within our district.
That's the goal, yeah.
I have a couple of questions about instructional time with this proposal. And let's just stick to option six. First of all, for instructional minutes, are there state requirements or law that we need to make sure we're hitting, and are we hitting those? Can you tell us about that?
Sure, we are. It's not minutes, it's hours, five hours a day.
Okay.
In school, basically.
And so our schedule, a regular day on our schedule now gives us how many hours exactly?
I think there's...
Five hours and fifty minutes.
Yeah, almost, six hours, yeah.
No, six hours and fifty minutes, because we're eight fifteen...
Almost six hours of instructional time.
Eight fifteen to three to five.
Okay, so we're well within, we're well within the parameters there, right? What I would ask is, and I realize you have the proposal, but again, just for sake of discussion, we're losing thirty hours less of instruction with option six. If we, what would be, would it even be possible to consider extending the day for the other four days of the week, fifteen minutes to make up that hour, and we would lose zero instructional time?
No. The contractual obligation is seven hours, ten minutes for staff.
Little question. If it's six hours and ten minutes, I'm sorry to interrupt, Art, why are they only doing six hours for institute days?
That's an approximate. They still work the same amount of days, but we, we were just rounding it to six hours, because they get that hour for lunch.
Well, meaning that seven hours and ten minutes does count the lunch. That's why I'm confused. I don't understand, we're using six as the number when it's not the number for the contract.
We'll be there for the seven, just one of those hours.
Well, yeah, just as far as if we're calculating hours, I'd like to know what it actually is in the proposal, and that's, the six is not accurate.
So it's six hours and forty minutes?
No, seven, ten?
Seven, ten, but it's not, it's an hour for lunch. So it's six hours and ten minutes.
So anyway, I'm sorry, while they're looking that up, Bill, can you just finish? Say, are you, I don't know if you were going to finish, but I'm asking you to explain a little more about why that, that doesn't work.
Well, the, the contract says that we're required to be at school seven hours and ten minutes of consecutive clock hours per school day. So I haven't done the math, so I don't... All I know is that we can't be there, not can't, but contractually, we're not obligated for more than seven hours and ten minutes.
Okay, that makes sense, but, so it's taking into account lunch, I guess?
Yeah.
Which is six hours.
And...
Lunch is thirty minutes.
Eight twenty to three o'clock is...
It should be low. Contract, it's thirty minutes.
Six hours and forty minutes, so.
It's thirty minutes, but we also get other...
Twenty minutes prep time, right?
Twenty minutes lost.
Okay, so between lunch and the current instructional day and prep time or break time, we don't, we can't fit it in?
The extra fifteen minutes, because we bombed by CBA.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, because I want to...
Can you address your kindergarten situation?
Elementary teachers, it's different than Hauser, but I think central... Our contractual day is eight oh five to three fifteen.
For which...
For the elementary schools?
Eight oh five to three fifteen.
Which school is that?
Elementary. Hauser's, I don't...
Wait, that's not ours, ours are different.
It's...
Ours is...
Yes, Hauser's different.
This is, Bill's going to explain the kindergarten. So I've taken a look at the kindergarten issue of having, I think that needs...
Nice watch.
And this is one possible solution, if it'll come up.
We need a gigabit connection.
That's what I do in the classroom.
It always works.
The kids are always buried in the vast... It means that the room were...
Yeah.
That's why. See, this is always the same.
Nice going, Miss...
So, for the early release, basically, so if you look, the AM student day would be the same, eight thirty to eleven thirty. The PM day would change. So it'd be the same number of hours, and I rounded. I think the student day is two hours and fifty-five minutes. I mean, it's right. So you're getting five more minutes of instructional time.
Yes.
Every month, every early release day. So the way it would work, and the issue is basically only a problem where there's an AM and a PM kindergarten at the same school. So it's Central and Ames. So this graph here, this chart here, shows the gray areas are when students attend, and the first and third column are the teacher schedule. So teacher one would teach morning kindergarten, teacher two would teach morning kindergarten. Teacher one would have a special, either PE or music would work the best, because they're half-hour specials, although art is as well. But there was a reason it doesn't work, I don't remember what it is. But they would be there. The morning, the morning kindergarten teacher would drop off their kids at their special, go pick up the PM kids, and start the PM class. At which point, that teacher would be teaching the PM kindergarten while second teacher takes lunch. They would switch spots. So the second teacher would then teach for the second hour of PM kindergarten, while the first teacher had their lunch and their plan from this special. And then it would be kind of a co-teaching for the last hour of PM kindergarten with staff development in the evening, or evening.
Not the evening.
From District. So that's, now, I'm sure there are other ways around kindergarten issue. This was just one that I happened upon, so it's all explained in...
It seems everywhere we've turned, we're always constrained by the collective bargaining agreement. And this is kosher with the collective bargaining agreement that...
It gives planning time. It gives lunchtime, as, as far as I know, should work with the collective bargaining agreement. The, the, I mean, there would be considerations for special scheduling, because obviously, this, whoever is teaching this class would then be releasing the kindergarten students, which takes time. I've never had to do it, but I've heard it takes a long time for releasing kindergarten. So like, this, this unit of time for the PE or music teacher would then have to be either a plan at Central, because we have lunch from noon to one, or it wouldn't make as much difference over at Ames, because the lunch is from eleven thirty to twelve thirty.
Right, so what do we say to Ames and Central parents who want, who care about equity and make sure that their programs and their kids are getting everything that a Hollywood, a Blithe, or a morning, you know, kindergarten kid is getting?
With staff development, there would be times for teachers to collaborate, which would make this PM class, I mean, those teachers would then have be aligned and have everything exactly the same. They know what they have to teach to be equal with the morning and with any other kids throughout the district. So with staff development, it matters less. I don't want to say it doesn't matter, but it matters less which individual teacher you have at which individual time, as much as when we didn't have professional development. So if there's no collaboration time for these teachers, this would be difficult, not only for the teachers, but for the students. But because there'll be time for those two teachers to get together and to talk and say, okay, this is how we're doing it. The other part is, it is Monday, so maybe things could be planned in such a way so that the social-emotional learning, which is, I think, a half-hour per week, could go in one of these spots. So that, that could be a self-contained, okay, we're doing, I am going to do this portion of the curriculum during this hour. Would be a way, I mean, there are different ways to structure it so that the teachers would feel comfortable, I think.
Okay, so, I should know this, but, so, eleven, eleven thirty, right?
Yes.
Let's just say that we had one class that was in gym, right?
Correct.
If we had another, if the other PM class wasn't music at that time, were able to do that scheduling?
The, the only reason that I would advise against having a special start is that the kids have to come in, take off coats in the middle of winter, then you're giving, if they start with a special, a special in kindergarten, you get ten minutes. Really, because you're having to take them to their room, they have to take off their coats and boots, and you have to tie their shoes, and then by the time you get there, my folks go back.
One other, one other question. Ames has two PM sections and one AM section, or am I reading that?
Two AM, one PM.
Two AM, one PM.
Okay, thanks.
How about the early childhood education? How does that kind of factor in? These teachers, that, we're going to have, what, four sections this year?
If they get approved, yes.
If they get approved, four sections. Would they be two in the morning, two in the afternoon? So there would be two sections in the afternoon that would be affected like the kindergarten?
Possibly, yes. I didn't look at that, because we don't have that yet. So I have not, so that wasn't something that I...
Well, it's in the plan, planning stage.
Well, even now, though, we have a afternoon ECE section at Hollywood.
But ECE, well, though, I will say, ECE, the problem with this does not receive specials. So they don't...
But it's something we have to look at regardless of whether we approve that other, that double, you know, that expanded program, so.
Right. So presently, we have one afternoon ECE at Hollywood?
Yeah, and one morning.
And one morning. So we, two different classes, or two different sections?
Two sections, different students.
Okay, different students, just half-day each?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, a couple of other questions. I'm not familiar with advisory, is that, that's a Hauser, is that a Hauser thing? Is that considered instructional time?
Is advisory instructional?
I think, don't quote me, because I haven't read the contract, I'm not involved in that, but the way I recall it is considered one supervisory role, because the way that Hauser structures their day, teachers are only allowed to teach X amount of instructional roles, and then are allowed to have one supervisory role in addition to it, from what I remember. But, don't quote me.
I'm not sure if I understood what that, what that all means.
It's not considered instructional.
So it doesn't count instructional minutes?
It doesn't mean we don't instruct during that time.
Right.
Alright, but it is not considered instructional time.
That is my understanding.
And, but it is a homeroom kind of a situation, so there are students there and...
Oh, sure.
Oh, yeah, and we do SEO once a week during that time period. So we are instructing, teachers are instructing, once a week, I mean, for sure.
At least once a week.
Yeah, a lot of the time, an advisory is spent teaching like organizational skills for kids and touching base individually with students about organization and what they have to do during their day. Like, I literally have a line of children, funny line, Mrs. Banholdser, I don't even know how she does it, she has like sixty kids in her advisory every day, asking her math questions. It's a time that's actually very well-used at Hauser, so.
Any potential for using any of that for, and maybe, you know, is it, do some kids actually study and do homework in that time?
I think that's one of the places that might change, so.
Why do we stand with the childcare bit? We haven't discussed that.
Looks like we're going to, towards three or four sections.
No, not ECE.
ECE?
No, no, no.
Oh, early release childcare.
Y M C A bit.
Oh, I see.
I know we had discussed last time the cost of it, and it was three hundred dollars per session, per time, so it's about twelve hundred dollars per week that the district would incur.
For which plan?
Any plan, because any, it's three hundred dollars for them to stay after, to provide that extra hour of childcare, per site.
Okay, so it would be less if you were gonna go through the every other week, actually. It would be six hundred dollars a month.
If we approved to fund it.
Right, right.
Which most districts do not.
I don't think any of them, I provided you guys this.
Well, most districts provide things like all-day kindergarten, which we don't have, so.
But if they, that's just kindergarten?
It's, well, kindergarten is, what I'm saying is, we pay a lot of money.
It's a what?
It's a program, like anything else.
Sure, but we're talking about, you know, the entire district.
Talking about value for your dollar here.
Right?
We're talking about, we're talking about a proposal and all the impacted programs, potentially.
So the after-school would cost us about twelve hundred dollars?
Per week.
Per week. So whether it's, and that would be for number five, right? Option five?
For both.
For both, it'd be for both.
But it's fewer weeks if it's the two times a month, right?
It's nineteen weeks compared to thirty weeks. Or, excuse me, nineteen times compared to thirty times.
Okay, so it'd be either nineteen times twelve hundred or thirty times twelve hundred. Okay.
Right.
Which comes out to...
It's like twelve grand versus twenty-five.
And that's for as many kids, there's no limits on that? If all sixteen hundred kids needed childcare?
I mean, then, that's all they told us, I mean, we don't know because we don't have...
Overflows going to O'Briens.
If it's the same amount of kids, for example, thirty kids go at Central, you know, that's about...
Can we, maybe in the interest of time, maybe discuss the professional development, and then maybe at a later date, talk about funding aftercare, if that's an option, or...
I agree.
That's a good suggestion.
Well, the thing is, though, I think one, it goes hand in hand.
I think it'll be some, I think it'll be some of the discussion, but I don't know if I'm prepared to vote on that portion of it yet.
Say, just...
Because it's not, is it even part of this motion? That we accept in, where does it say that we accept this?
No, it's part of the discussion, and it came up last week. And there was, there was a survey that went out, was asking, you know, I think that we're making representations to the public, and I think a lot of the public is under the assumption that we aren't gonna provide that based upon representations we made. And I'm kind of confused myself.
I don't agree with that.
Well, I'd like to, well, we have to be clear, and I'd like to know.
That's fine, but I...
You know, because there's a lot of people who are gonna be impacted by this.
Alright, well, so then let's start talking about proposal on the table instead of...
Can I just add one more question before we move on, or to the proposal? Can you address professional development for, you know, people who aren't involved with teaching Common Core, particularly music, gym, I mean, I, you know, can we...
We're behind in the Common Core and gym. Really, Paul.
So, on the twenty-eighth of April, our plan is to have separate Common Core professional development for all of our non-ELL and math teachers, that it's the interdisciplinary standards. So there are Common Core standards that go across all content areas, including gym, you know, that are connected. So their focus will be on how to implement those standards within their instruction. So they're not the same as the ELA standards, they're not necessarily the same as the math standards, but they're content-based standards that focus on reading, writing, listening, and speaking within their specific disciplines.
So that requires fifty, or whatever the amount of same amount, number of hours in professional development as everybody else? I'm thinking gym teacher, I'm far-fetched, I was ten o'clock at night trying to imagine how possibly they'd have to incorporate Common Core standards.
Well, part of that would be with the gym teachers having the time to collaborate on those standards, because they don't have those, especially in the health part of the gym curriculum. Now, would they be in as many Common Core-aligned PDs as their classroom teachers? I can't say yes right now, but they will be involved in very specific cross-building, across...
Plus, we'll be talking about performance evaluation reform act, so we'll be looking at teacher evaluations next year that it will impact every certified...
Well, that's six hours, because what was identified, that's six.
That's one, and we'll also be talking about English language learners, and I don't have the exact numbers, but there's also, it's not just gonna be Common Core next year, there's the other four topics that we presented to you.
No, I remember that, but specifically, really, in Common Core, that's the biggest one here.
It's thirty hours, right?
Something, yeah. Plus the twenty...
As the music teacher, I can say that there are, from what I've heard of the Common Core standards, there are things, especially in English language arts, about speaking and listening, that really could have a lot to do with what I do, maybe not English, but how to be a good listener, what to listen for in certain ways, which I teach through music, which would help those things. So that would be one thing, as well as there are core arts standards that are coming out that are Common Core, the Common Core people won't let us use their words, so we just use the word core.
Alternative core.
Core arts standards.
Uncommon.
That are coming out for the arts. So those are things that we would then have to as well look at to say, okay, how are we implementing the core arts standards in our areas? Yeah, and like I said, too, you know, one of the goals of this PD is so we have an aligned curriculum and instructional practices within our school district, which we don't have right now. So for the special teachers to be able to have those times to work on those standards and align their instruction, because Paul and I were talking today, what happens to those classes necessarily happens across the district, especially because they don't talk, not because they don't like each other, they really do, actually, at different times. So we're trying to align everything, and Common Core, I mean, that's our vehicle to get that process going for the alignment.
Besides, if I can also say, Jane and I teach music also at Ames and Blythe and Central. We have, we have six levels that we teach, kindergarten and five, so it's not just addressing one level of core implementation, but you have K through five, which is rather demanding, considering the levels. Thank you.
Alright, fifty-four, thirty are not Common Core.
Thirty are not Common Core? One last question, is this a vote for this next year? Meaning, I want to know, is this just for Common Core implementation and not something that's gonna get institutionalized for the rest of our life?
I think we have a lot of things that we pointed out, those five topics, that we need to get caught up with. Common Core, ELL, the PARA, Twenty-First Century Technology Standards, or Teaching Standards, RTI, and inclusive practices, I think those are gonna be our five focuses, or areas of focus, I should say. And then Common Core's gonna be the majority of them, because that's pretty much the core of what we teach, and then the other things. So, yes, we are asking for a one-year proposal to answer your question, Rachel, and we're hoping, and I think we talked about this with the RAC, that when we start negotiating, we'll have some more time built in for professional development in a future contract.
Alright, I guess we can just repeat what the motion is on the table, which is the approval of option five, and option five is the...
Twice a month.
Twice a month, okay, so...
So can I amend it just a little bit, based upon Rachel's comment, that we are, the motion is to approve option five for the professional development proposal for school year twenty fourteen to fifteen?
Second.
Okay, so, roll call for the amended motion of option five, the twice-a-month proposal for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen.
Lisa Gayner?
I want option six, so I'm gonna say no.
No.
Michael O'Brien?
Uh, no.
Arthur Perry?
No.
David Kadama?
No.
Randy Brockway?
Uh, no.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
Alright.
I move that the board approve the professional development proposal, option six, for the twenty fourteen, fifteen school year.
I'll second that.
Alright. Call the roll.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Lisa Gayner?
Aye.
Rachel Morella?
No.
Arthur Perry?
Aye.
David Kadama?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
Michael O'Brien?
No.
Did you have a third proposal?
I think it's a moot point, what I think, I think, well, for the record, I think this puts a, you know, it puts a terrible inconvenience on our students, that the parents, I understand, but I think taking thirty hours of instruction time is a lot, and I think I probably would have favored more of an after-school type approach. And I just, I'm sorry, I don't agree with it, and I say this at great peril for sleeping on the couch.
Well, Michael, I can, I definitely appreciate that, and I look to next year, we're gonna have to raise the accountability of our staff, of our administrators, of our leaders, that they, we're gonna have to step it up, we're gonna have to make up the time. They, there are standards that need to be met, we need to, we are tasked with providing a challenging academic learning environment that pursues academic excellence, and that's what we're here to deliver.
I agree, I'm very conflicted on this issue, I appreciate everyone's input on it. I am, by no means against professional development at all, I just think with the new PARA standards, as far as trying to put teachers on notice and get rid of low-performing teachers, that if I'm a teacher and my, and I'm not meeting the Common Core standards, that I would do everything I could in my power after school, before school, to bring my students up, so.
Alright, thank you, and option six is passed. Alright, next. Alright, we are on to student fees. Would like to have a motion to approve the schedule of student fees for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year, which is recommending no increase in school fees.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Michael O'Brien?
Uh, aye.
Rachel Morella?
Aye.
David Kadama?
Aye.
Randy Brockway?
Aye.
Lisa Gayner?
Aye.
Arthur Perry?
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia?
Aye.
Okay, we've approved the school fees for next year, no increase. Next, I would like, next on the agenda, new business, is a life safety architect update. May we, Bhavna, can you tell us where we are on that?
Next, I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa, who's gonna lead the discussion, and then Zach and I and David will contribute.
Okay, so, just to give, for the benefit of the audience, in mid to late winter, the district embarked on the process of securing an architect of record, and RFP was published in the local media, and a committee comprised of myself, David Bhavna, and Zach completed the interview process. We, a total of nine firms responded, and the field was narrowed down by Bhavna and Zach to three, of which the committee interviewed the three and narrowed it down to two, and completed a second set of interviews. At this time, we're, there is no recommendation to move forward with an architect of record. The projects that are on the district's horizon, things have very varying scopes, from roof replacement to window replacement on a historic building, to potentially developing Twenty-First Century library spaces. And so it was felt that really the immediate need, after the committee did a lot of talking and thinking through, was the completion of a five-year safe, life safety and building plan. And we really would, the goal of that plan is really to get solid direction on project prioritization, and couple that with costs, so that we can have strong budget planning. And we can roll that into the budget process, so we can know that the money's there for the projects that we need and which projects we need to do for second, whatever. So with that, and once we've completed that analysis, we would like to then align whatever those projects are with the right architectural firm to deliver the goal. Clearly, if you're putting windows in Blythe, that's a different person than someone that's doing a roof plan to put a roof on a building, or just potentially designing a new library space to make it Twenty-First Century. So I think we thought that we needed to be able to know what the projects are, and then align ourselves with the right person to do them. So Bhavna is gonna give us an update on process and timing, and how we'd like to go about potentially executing the five-year life safety building.
Just outline, just some key dates for you. No, wait till everybody has it, I'll have them. So based on what we decide and discuss and decide today, we just heard the update from Lisa regarding the architect of record process. And then we would like, we're asking you tonight for direction on, do we move forward with a five-year life safety facilities review? And then if we do, then you can see the timeline is to follow, then we would review the draft of the RFP to post, and it was different, it will be different than what we posted in December, because in December, we were posting for an architect of record. Now we're posting for a firm to do a five-year facilities life safety review, or however we wanna call it. However, I also did check with our new attorney, and our new attorney says we can go both ways. We can go with the firms that have already submitted, and have them, and contact them, and ask them to put together proposals for life safety, or we can stop, start the process all over again, and just do a specific RFP.
Who's the current firm?
Uh, Francic?
No, 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 you said go through the current architectural firm, who's that?
No, go through the current proposals that we have, the current architect of record.
Concept three is our current architect.
Right, but I think she's referring to the nine that answered to the other RFP.
Art had mentioned something, he said there was, he thought, didn't you mention, he thought there was a five-year plan at some point?
No, it was more than five years ago.
Yeah.
Oh, was it?
I actually did call Cliff English, and who was Rich's last name a while back, a few weeks ago?
Chris English.
Chris English, Rich.
Rich.
And Rich.
I don't wanna say, yeah.
And basically, they had a ten-year plan that would have been, I think, I think it was ninety-six, so it would be...
Ninety-six.
In nineteen ninety-six, so it would be, or I'm sorry, two thousand and six.
Oh, okay, I wouldn't have been surprised if it was nineteen ninety-six, but please go ahead.
No, two thousand and six, which would expire in twenty sixteen. The intervening factor is, is that they'd done considerable work on the buildings. So their next step would have been to actually update the plan, their existing plan, based on all of the work that they have done, and, which is the way I prefer the... And, which is the way I prefer that we go.
So, the plan, the current plan goes out to 2016, so that's like, what, two years? We have... We almost have a roadmap for the next two years, do we not?
I think you'd have to go back and look what was on those last two years and see how much of it was captured in the building project.
Yeah.
And, of course, they, you know, are in the best position to know that, 'cause they did the work and it's their plan.
So, we take... We got two years, and we have to add three onto it, so we need a five-year plan.
I don't know, was the law five-year or ten-year? Or maybe you don't have to have a year if you're not doing the tax levy? The other thing... The other thing that I learned is that if you are levying in the site, you know, the life safety account, you must have that plan in place when that money starts rolling in. So, had we approved the increase, you know, we would have had to have had it in place by now when we started accepting that revenue. But because we didn't, we're... I guess we're fine. So, anyway, any other comments?
I feel like I'm okay with a new RFP. I think if Concept Three wants to bid, they can and should. I do feel that a ten-year plan that was done eight years ago is probably gonna be due for revisiting anyway. I mean, we know that a lot has changed, so...
Yeah, I'm just gonna remind everybody that Remesha's recommendation was, is that we try to work with Concept Three, because they know our building so well. And Mark Miller has retired, I believe everybody knows that, and, you know, but we had a team of architects at our...
Right.
You know, so for whatever that's worth. And we've just gone through an RFP process, and, you know, I don't have, you know, a lot of stomach to go through it again.
Do we have to go through an RFP process to hire an architect? Or is it... I would believe it's exempt under the state law.
It is, it is. You don't need one.
Professional services.
And I believe it's an RFQ, really, is what you should be doing, an RFQ versus an RFP. And, as I said, I'm not saying that we wanna keep Concept Three together, but as long as we wanna confine this to just updating the life safety plan, and then when there is additional work...
Well, I think it's more than life safety, 'cause there's maintenance issues, too. I mean, parking lots, roofs, those are different than life safety, and those have to be rolled in together. I mean, you have to have a plan for all of it.
They are, but they're in a position...
I'm not disagreeing with that, but you have to remember it's both, because both are critical.
But it's not a matter of whether or not they're in a position to do it. Being in a position is one thing. Is this the right firm for us? We're trying to make a decision that we're setting a higher standard for the professional services that are provided to this district. They need to provide, just not, you know, pieces of paper, but they need to be able to communicate, be able to create a transparent process to our public. There's... We're holding... Again, we're holding your professional vendors to a much higher standard. And so, this is what I'm looking for, so...
I don't see why they can't perform according to our standards.
Right, and so, they can then be a part of the RFP process. So, our recommendation of the team that has been working on this over the past few months is that we go through the RFP process, just as I'll announce here. So, that's just our recommendation.
Well, what's to prevent us from getting all the same bidders as we did before? I mean, what happens? I just feel like we're losing more time, because we're putting out this RFP, and we're gonna end up in the same boat we were before with the same nine vendors, and here we go.
But we're looking at... We're looking for kind of a different...
Different.
Very tailored, very focused.
Different focus. We're... Life safety... And life safety does include roofs, I believe, and fire...
Roofs, but not parking lots.
Right.
But you did the parking lots.
But it doesn't include windows.
But handicapped access and accessibility in the buildings, that's all life safety, I believe.
Well, if it's, yeah, if it's a more narrowly tailored RFP, I think that would be a good idea.
It would... Well, our recommendation is very specific, that's it. That's all I'm accomplishing.
I think I would support the RFP process, just because I've had some questions about Concept Three, you know, and you talked, you know, about... You talked about the presentations and the communication and so forth. Mary Rose, you said that they could live up to our expectations, but I'm not convinced that they can.
I don't know if they can or they can't, you know, but I do know that they do have a lot of knowledge about our buildings. It's valuable, was Remesha's recommendation. The main communicator that we had here is no longer involved. I... Anyway, you know, whatever the group wants to do. The only thing I would say is I would like to specifically invite Perkins and Will.
Sure.
Well, no, Perkins and Will are the original architects on Blythe, and I just can't... And they still exist, and I think, you know, that we had... I don't know if they were involved with our bidding before, but that, again, I mean...
But they are in business.
They are, oh, yeah, for a hundred years, and they did the original work. And I was just, you know, I think they should be invited.
Yeah.
They sound old, Perkins and Will, they're a hundred years old now.
Perkins and Will.
Yes, they are... But it is.
Do they do schools still?
Well, you know, I like it, I think they do. I mean, I would at least find out about it, but that would be a suggestion I would make.
Because then, everything we don't... We're not happy with the building, we'll just say, "He should have fixed this a hundred years ago." Oh, wait, the building was not how old?
So, did... How did we miss Concept Three the first time around? Would... Did they not just read that little thing in the newspaper? Is that what it was? And did Perkins and Will not read that little notice in the newspaper?
Maybe they didn't want us as a client.
No, I think with your current firm, I think it's customary to invite them.
Yeah, and I think if we have firms that we wanna invite, we need to give them a heads-up, maybe.
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with giving them a heads-up, but I think if you have an existing...
But it's how we talked about that, you know, so if you give Concept Three a heads-up, you have to give everyone that you've done business with or have any kind of involvement to. You have to keep it on a level playing field.
On an RFQ? And who else have we done business with?
Who else would that be?
Who else would that be?
For architects?
So, we would have to go through our files and see, you know...
Well, and Remash. We have Remash as an architect.
Remash would have to get a heads-up.
He's good, I would ask him.
And that's fine, but we just have to keep it fair.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm just saying.
Well, I don't... But we didn't hire him as an architect, we hired him as...
We've done business with him in that field.
Whatever the rules are, let's follow them, you know. I don't happen to know what they are.
Well, Bhavna asked the attorney, and if we do have a very detailed description of the rules...
Have all of us seen that?
You have not, because we just got it, but we can certainly circulate it, and it lays out the entire what we can and what we can't do in regards to this process. So, it would probably be a good thing to put in a weekly report.
Please.
I think this refocus is good, I do.
All right, so I guess we're all in agreement that to go through an RFP, a limited... A refocused RFP.
So, on a specific five-year facilities life safety review?
Yes.
As the first...
Yeah, I would take out that Architect of Record thing. I don't know, that seems to...
No, no, no. That's just the same we updated you. I updated one, and then...
I just see that it's...
What we wanna accomplish today is direction, that we're gonna move to an RFQ for a five-year review. And then, the thought process is, we will come back at the Finance Committee meeting in May with the draft RFP for everyone to see.
Okay.
All right, sounds good to me.
Before it goes out, and then we'll work the schedule from there. And the only thing I would say is, we're opting to try to get this done between June and August, with hopes we can put some of the results in the budget process. But that's pretty tight at the end. I mean, he's gonna be working on the budget process for September, so we are hoping as we go through it, we can glean information and make some... And use it to put into the budget process. But you just have to know, the timing's not ideal.
Well, my question, too, would be, is this... Is there urgency on any particular thing here? Is there any reason why we can't wait a year? Put it into the budget for 2015?
Roof at what store?
Howzer and Blythe.
Right, and Blythe, because of its historic significance, is gonna be a little bit more of an issue. And is that one where we have to work with the Building Commission?
We did, we talked about that.
They're not much, sure.
I don't know, we need... I don't know what we're looking for there.
Yeah, for the roof.
And you start talking...
Probably anything that does exterior work.
Yeah, I just...
And we were, I mean, but those are the two...
But that... Yeah, that was...
Howzer more than Blythe.
Just Howzer's small gym.
The gym.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if Concept Three had a plan for that, or... I mean, we've known that the roof and the windows.
Concept Three has a roof plan, I just don't... I think we deferred some of it, didn't we? Did you read the roof plan?
Yes.
And the Howzer gym, has it been deferred?
It's been deferred, and we should have been done here two years.
Right.
Yeah, I just... I thought we were gonna need some long-time horizons to work with the Building Commission. Isn't that always...
Yes, but I... The Howzer situation, I think, is more pressing than the Blythe at the moment.
Oh, okay, and it would also be easier to... Quicker to accomplish, because of...
Yes.
Okay, all right, we're on track then. All right, so, refocused RFQ. All right, next, Bhavna, I'd like if you could talk about the... Kind of the instructional and infrastructure... Well, the organizational structure for instruction, if you could.
I'm not sure if I understand your question.
Well, the Director of Technology position, and also your org structure chart that you have up, if you could sort of explain the org structure. It does appear to be a change.
And it's just in draft form, and is this something that I shared with you all in my weekly report, so I just kept it as a reference. It is not out, it's not... I'm not asking for any action, it was more informational, because I think there was a question on if certified and non-certified staff are reporting to the new Director of Innovation and Informational Technologies. So, that's why I restructured it the way that I did, because you can see that there will be certified staff as well as non-certified staff according to that position.
All right, and if you could, on that organizational chart, could you read what it currently says in terms of the box?
And specifically the technology?
Yes.
Director of Innovation and Instructional Technology. And in the contract, you pointed out that it said Director of Infrastructure Technology, and I believe that that's incorrect, because the job description, the job posting, and this org chart, that is what we had agreed to.
Well, the contract needs to be fixed.
The title, just in the contract. Right now, the contract says Director of Infrastructure Technology.
I'm gonna go back to, I did pull our... The April minutes from the April 2013, and the organization structure that was recommended a year ago was somewhat different. As I recall, the infrastructure, the curriculum piece, the instructional technology piece at that time was going to be reporting to the Director of Academic Excellence. That was the recommendation at the time. The other thing, I think there was also a recommendation on the table to hire an innovation, the same title, but not at a director level, at something less, that would also report through to the Director of Academic Excellence. So, I just wanna point out that this is a different organizational structure. And those positions, I guess, those positions were going to be less... Oh, and at the same time, there was also going to be an infrastructure position reporting through the Finance Director, I believe, also a year ago. So, the fact that we're now combining them, and I guess my concern is that we are really not hiring an infrastructure, or not hiring, not... We don't have an infrastructure position, we have an instructional position.
No, I think this is an infrastructure position that understands the network, understands the infrastructure needs that we have, that also understands where our teachers need to go and how that infrastructure needs to support that. So, this person will be overseeing the two instructional positions for technology.
Well, can I be more specific? I also, I looked back at those minutes, too, and specifically, the proposal on the table was to reorganize the Technology Department, and we were going to have two positions in that, Academic Excellence to Brian, and specifically, he would do the instructional/educational portion, I'm sorry, instructional slash educational portion, and we're gonna hire an infrastructure director to perform the technical, operational. I guess...
Was that the recommendation in April, to hire an infrastructure person?
Yes.
Right, April of 2013 in the Education Committee, and that's specifically... And that was my recollection, too, that Brian was gonna do the instructional piece of the Technology Department, and then we're gonna have several infrastructure.
Also, again, we... You know, I did talk to actually both attorneys about the Type 75 and did a little bit of Googling, and typically, they've said their infrastructure position is typically an IMRF position, and the instructional piece tends is, again, it's more of an academic position. And, again, also, I had a belief, which I campaigned on, that I would like to see our curriculum piece, or instructional technology piece, be part of curriculum. It's a tool, it supports curriculum, and just the fact that we're operating it parallel, again, that's a particular, you know, orientation of mine. But, so, I guess the fact that it's changed. And also, I did see some of the information that went back and forth between, you know, Aiden and some of our other experts, saying that we now had a focus that that was more of a managerial slot versus a hands-on slot. That seemed to have been the gist of our vision, was now more managerial. And then, I also go back to, actually, the Landmarks article back around, I think December 3rd, where we said we wanted to hire a hands-on position. So, I'm just kinda...
And that was with the current staff that we had, yes. I did want to hire a hands-on person with the current staff that we had back in November, or whenever that was.
All right.
I would say that after this year of discussion about what the technology program is, that I'm, you know... I think we're dealing with a different landscape now. We've had a lot of conversations, we're talking about outsourcing, that wasn't even discussed a year ago, so...
All right.
I think we should evaluate the proposals that we have.
Yeah, the 2013 Education Committee, I mean, that was the previous regime. And there were a number of recommendations, I think, from that Education Committee that were never followed either.
Well, they were Bhavna's recommendations.
Well, and they were... My recommendation's based on three months of just working with people through informal interviews and action research. They were not my recommendation as your full-time superintendent.
You weren't even our superintendent at that point.
No, I wasn't, I was sitting in the audience.
Yeah.
Well, I guess I look back at Client First, where we all started in all this, when we bought, we paid for this technology audit, and our problems were not curriculum, they were infrastructure. And I follow Mike's lead when he originally said, and said, "You know what, we got a lot of emails from those who came to the technology meeting and said, 'This is what you need, you need an infrastructure person,'" and they're still saying, "We need an infrastructure person," and I think we still need that. I don't know how that need is ever gonna go away. I don't know how a curriculum person's gonna help us with the problems that the Client First audit revealed.
I think the candidate that we are recommending, and Randy was on the interviewing committee, as well as Brian and Zach, has a very strong background in infrastructure, in a school-district setting. So, that is my recommendation, that he has the background in the infrastructure. We've done our homework, we've done our diligence in finding out, he's setting up a small school district, he's moved on to a larger school district, wants to get back into a senior level, reporting to the superintendent, so he has that infrastructure background, and I'm confident that he can move us forward, especially now with Matt not being here. We're gonna need someone who fully understands the instructional side of things, too. And Matt does a good job of balancing both.
I don't wanna really, you know, discuss the candidate here or the credentials. I just wanna, again, point out that we have a lot of discussion that has gone on. We had Client First, which is... We had Client First, which is an infrastructure presentation, we had Net 56, which was an infrastructure presentation, we had.
Align Cloud.
Align Cloud, it was all infrastructure discussion, and we also had the technology forum, where we got a pretty strong recommendation to go heavy on, you know, infrastructure and someone who has managed vendors and SLAs, and I, I don't know anything about whether this, this person has that or not, I don't, I don't know that.
You know, the part of the job description, it was part of the interviews, and I would not have recommended someone who did.
Well, and I also believe we had Align Cloud, look at the job description, and they thought it was a good one.
Well, I'm, I'm saying that the job description led with all instructional, so.
I'm saying that I believe Mike did that, and he, they said it was.
No, with, with an emphasis on managing.
Vendors.
Vendors.
And contracts.
And contracts.
Well, that was just adding the one line, right?
Correct.
Not at the top, kind of in there, but.
Um, you know, I, I think it's open to interpretation of what each board member, you know, thinks that this, this job should, should be, you know, I, I do, I think right now, the focus should be more on, on infrastructure than, than curriculum, because look how, how much we've struggled with trying to, to deal with infrastructure.
But at the same time, we just heard that, that there are challenges and serious needs in terms of our curriculum. Ten percent aligned.
I agree, yeah.
Ten percent aligned, and that, that this curriculum, as we move forward, is gonna demand a lot out of technology, it's gonna, it's gonna require, so I don't see how you could separate the two.
Well, but they are.
They work together.
You need a visionary.
And so you need, as, as the structure, as the leader of that, you need to have an appreciation of both, of both of that, to do, be effective, to make this district more effective in delivering that academic excellence that we're tasked with doing.
I, I don't feel that we're, by saying that our priority at this time is infrastructure, that we're precluding the hiring of some other time in, in the future, which is basically, you know, instruction, but I, it is my under, you know, at least my feeling, that they are two separate disciplines, and, and then you can just kinda see by the, the education and the credentials, that they're just different people.
But I feel like you're dismissing a candidate that might have both.
Well, again, we, we're, I'm just.
I mean, if you have both, isn't that the best of both worlds?
Well.
If that were the case.
I don't wanna, you know what, I don't.
This discussion should be not had here.
All I'm basically saying, look, I, I, I don't mean to discuss the candidate, all I'm saying is that the focus, when I, when I personally author, you know, voted to authorize this RFP, was to lead with infrastructure, so, because that's what I thought we were being asked through all of these series of meetings, so, and I see something shifting around over time with the, the org structure. I personally would feel better if our instructional, technology people reported into curriculum, and that's, again, that's so, and I don't know that we particularly had this discussion before we went to, to fill the position, or, or when we posted it.
We had a pretty good discussion about the type seventy-five at a meeting before we posted it.
Oh, but, but we, but we already had the candidates already in here, and again, also, again, I got more information on type seventy-five, you know, so again, it's, no, we're, anyway, it's, it was basically the type seventy-five was required to supervise curric, you know, basically curriculum, certified curriculum.
Certified staff.
Certified staff, when it, you know, a few months ago, it was fine that they reported the curriculum. So I, anyway, I, I don't, I don't really.
That's fine, we can move off, and we can have the discussion in, it should be a very lively discussion in, in closed session. Two questions I have is, you're saying that the director of special education, student services will hand, handle summer school?
Next.
All of it?
For extended school year.
ESY.
ESY, special ed, special ed.
All right, all right. And then currently, Quest and List, who do they report to? Director of academic excellence? Can you explain why you're moving that over to, to report to principals?
Because they're more site-based, we're gonna have each of them, right now, they're, they report to their, or they report to Brian, because in the past, I believe they reported, do I wanna say to Janice? Is it to Janice? So we kept the same structure, but now since we're having more of the principals be site-based, and they're gonna be responsible more for the para and the evaluation, we wanted them to, the principals to be the direct reports. They do the day-to-day observation, the day-to-day interaction with them, as well as with the teachers.
I guess, under the, we're talking about the org structure, could you go through, under the director of academic excellence, what are those functions or people?
Both.
Can you explain which ones are people, and which ones are functions, and?
Well, like, for example, you know, like, any of the, anything with Kade instructional programs would require all the people, so Brian's gonna be working with all the principals and the, they may not directly report to him, but they'll be working with him as far as job performance, if and when, this is what I'm saying, this is a draft, because we haven't approved any RTI positions, but, you know, RTI, if we propose, we're proposing this evening, RTI math specialists for the start, they might be reporting to Brian, and once the program gets fully developed, and we have them assigned to specific buildings, they may be reporting to the principal as well.
All right, do we, do we have any RTI staff currently, for math or any other function?
No.
All right, so this would be our first venture into RTI, but eventually they would be, probably be assigned to a site in most cases? All right, what other ones?
A lot of it would be, like, for example, Donna McLaughlin, she's our HR, so she reports to Brian.
RTI, language.
Anybody that's, so like, professional development, Brian's in charge of all the professional development, that he works with the teachers and the principals to do that professional development.
Right, but they're not, but they're not direct reports, they're, they're a matrix or, so how many direct reports are in that function, outside of potentially RTI for a while? Any?
Currently, right now, one, but Brian helps all the principals with all their evaluations of their ancillary staff and is also teaching staff, so he'll be, you know what I mean, so he's in charge of all the Kade instructional programs, and he may not have a direct report, but it's the entire instructional program.
No, I mean, I understand, as director of curriculum, that's his role, but I'm asking specifically for direct reports, and of that, it's mainly RTI?
Right, it will be.
I, I heard something here that I think is incorrect, we do have RTI in language.
The list teachers, they're not called RTI teachers, they're list teachers.
They're, they're not RTI?
They're not specifically RTI.
They're, they overlap?
They provide tier two and tier three.
Yeah, okay, so, so we do, we, we have it covered to, to some level there, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Actually, that's helpful, thanks for clarifying that.
And what do those people report into right now?
Principals.
Oh, I don't know.
To you, Brian?
To you, oh, no, it's proposed.
And so, what, what, what's her next step? Are we voting on this organizational structure next meeting, or what?
I, I don't, Mary Rose put it on each other.
Well, I, I saw it in there, also wanted to, you know, felt that it would be better to talk about that in an open session.
Right.
And so, and also related to just the director of technology and some of the questions that I had about the position itself, not the candidate, so, but what typically happens? Does the board approve org structures?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't think so, I think we just hire the staffing, approve the staffing of positions that are defined there.
Well, I mean, yeah, we hire, we hire a superintendent, superintendent provides us with a proposal, you know, with any organizational charge, and we'll kind of, you know, but our, our votes are on the individuals.
But it's also our, our vision, isn't it, the board's vision of how our structure best works?
So, so then, based off the organizational structure, are we adding any positions in the current, in, in your current proposal? Any new positions?
What proposal are we referring to?
Your organizational structure.
No. I mean, possibly the RTI and possibly CE that we're gonna talk about later this afternoon, or later this evening.
All right, thanks.
There's nothing that I haven't brought to your attention, nothing new to me.
All right, so, so it was a good discussion to understand it, and to put it out in open session and move on, okay. I guess I'll just announce the future meeting dates, April twenty-sixth, we will have a, which is a Saturday, a special meeting at noon in the Learning Resource Center, May sixth, the finance committee meeting at seven PM, May sixth, the special meeting, nine-thirty PM in the, well, after the finance committee meeting, that's tentative, May twentieth, the policy committee meeting, which has been canceled, so, and then May twentieth, the regular business meeting.
Are you weeping? I'm sorry.
It was.
I was not weeping.
So, anyway, somebody can do something else with that hour and a half.
You need to do the open to the closed.
Um, yes, so next, may I have a motion to adjourn to close session?
I'd like to move that we move into closed session to discuss appointment, deployment compensation, assessment of performance, or discuss those specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony of a complaint lodged against employee at the public body or against legal counsel for the public body determines.
So, somebody wanna second that?
Second.
All right, money to the roll. Okay. Randy Brockway.
Aye.
Lisa Gaynor.
Aye.
David Kadama.
Aye.
Rachel Morella.
Aye.
Michael O'Brien.
Aye.
Arthur Perry.
Aye.
Mary Rose Mandia.
Aye.
I just wanna go.